Good evening and welcome to the December 14, 2021, meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:05. Another reminder, to help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, city council as well as board and commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of your homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendale.ca/glive, on youtube.com/mikeglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called ScreenWeave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. Public comments on the specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. Thank you. Now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Present.
Brotman, here. Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian, here. And Mayor Devine.
Here. And the flag salute, Councilmember Najarian, please, would you?
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and justice.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, during this festive holiday time, we pray for your continued blessings and that you keep us reminded of the reason for the season. We thank you for all of the beauty, joy, and wonder during the holidays. We pray that your love shines and that we reflect you in our actions. Finally, we pray for the spirit of unity, love, and peace across our community. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Next item, please, your report.
Next item is the agenda for the December 14, 2021, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council, which was posted on December 7, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item?
Next item would be three presentations and appointments. Three A would be the regular Housing Authority and the City Council meeting for December 21, 2021, December 28, 2021, and January 4, 2022 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, January 11, 2022.
Thank you. We wish everybody a happy holiday. Next item?
Next item would be consent items, including minutes to follow in our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Do I have a motion for this item?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes, thank you. And next item?
Next item would be city council and staff comments.
Okay. My colleagues, any comments?
Yes, I.
Could I just, Mr. Brotman?
Madam Mayor, yes, I have two things. One of them is, I was hoping that the Director of Public Works could say something about our plans on January 1 with respect to recycling of organic materials. As you probably know, there was an article in the LA Times just the other day that talks about what's coming, and it talks about how residents will be required to separate organic waste in a separate pail. And I've gotten a few emails, and maybe some of you have also, from people curious about, you know, what does this mean for them? And are we going to be giving out pails? Are we going to be giving out compostable bags? Are they going to get fined if they don't do it? So I just thought it would be helpful if Mr. Ambrodi could say a few words about what to expect as of January 1 and what, particularly with respect to residents.
Madam Mayor, members of city council, the SB 1383 is going into effect, January, the requirements is going to go into effect January 1, 2022. There are some challenges with the implementation. However, the City of Glendale, we are very well poised to do the implementations. We've done a lot of work upfront. We've done a lot of initial public outreach, and we're going to continue doing that. One element, for example, is the change in the colors for the refuse carts. We're going away from the current burgundy and gray and green to black for trash, blue for recycling, and green for both the greens and the organics. So we've done a lot of replacements over the last few years, and we're going to continue to do so. The main, a couple of main elements with SB 1383, as was mentioned by Councilmember Brotman, are the organics, the separation, and the food diversion program. We are providing a complimentary pail to everybody that would like it to keep track of their food waste, but again, there is no fourth cart. Everything is going to be, as far as the food, is going to go into the green cart, basically, with the greens. However, we are providing that for convenience to our residents in terms of collecting their food. So that's basically as far as that goes. We have, as you know, we've passed ordinances to require organics diversion for both residential and commercial. We are in compliance as far as the ordinance is concerned with the requirements of SB 1383. We have implemented the franchising program for commercial and multifamily residential of five units or more, and they are going to be working on that program as well. We are working with and continue to expand the food recovery program to make sure that the food waste is, the edible food doesn't go to waste, and we are working towards that 25% requirement by 2025. In terms of the, any penalties, we are, we're not going to really start that. The program, the SB 1383 provides a period of adjustment, if you will, so although it goes into effect in 2022, we're not going to be enforcing any penalties until, we don't anticipate until 2024. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, if you could just, just add, the new bins, when will people be getting them? And, I mean, are you just replacing them as, so I just, as a resident, I just wait till you knock on my door and say, here are your new bins?
Absolutely, yeah. We're, it's an ongoing thing. We're going to be still collecting it the way it was. And again, the SB 1383 allows for that period. It doesn't, has a cutoff date of immediately on January 1, 2022, for all these to take effect. So we are basically going around and collecting these as we get the supplies from the manufacturer.
Okay. And on the pails, do people have to ask for them, or are they going to just be distributed with the new bins, or how do people get them?
We're going to provide them as complimentary as we're doing the replacements, but they can always call us, and we'd be happy to provide those to them.
So it's not, so, but if they don't call, eventually somebody is going to deliver a bin to every household, or is it on a request-only basis?
Well, the bins are going to be replaced, but the pails are really.
Pails, I meant, sorry.
Pale. Yeah, that's optional. I mean, even if you don't have a pale, you know, as long as you have a, you have something that you can separate your organics, your food waste, that'll work as well. But yeah, we're going to distribute those, and if they don't have it, they can always contact our office and we'll provide one for them.
Okay. Thank you. I had one other thing, if nobody else had any comments.
Go ahead.
Okay. The other thing, and I know this is, for a lot of people, a sensitive issue, but it's on, the question that came up at our last meeting about, let me take this off, about paying for testing for employees that are unvaccinated. I learned after that, after last week's meeting, that the City of LA is in fact requiring its unvaccinated employees to get tested twice a week, and they are being asked to pay, or they are being not asked, they're required to pay $65 a test, so that's $130 a week for people that are unvaccinated. I believe they're also required to handle the vaccine, the testing on their own time, although it's, maybe it's the kind that you can do at home and you bring in, I'm not quite sure. So I know city attorney told us that there were legal issues there. I have heard they're being sued. I have heard that city attorney's office in LA thinks that they're in a good position to defeat that suit, but I would, I would like staff to look into that, and I would like us to consider whether we can be a little more aggressive about this, because it is very frustrating to me, and I think to some of my colleagues here, all of my colleagues, maybe, that we're having to spend taxpayer money for testing when people could easily go out for free and get the vaccine and keep the community safe. That's it.
If that's a request, Councilmember Brotman, Madam Mayor, I'd like to have a second so that we can, or the city attorney can bring a report back.
I'll second that, because I saw that on the news, that the LA was charging their unvaccinated, and I thought that maybe we should do the same thing, so I will definitely second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Before, before we go on, I'm sorry, Councilmember, yes, did you have something to say about that?
Yeah, just, I'm sure that you'll, you'll speak more about the press conference we were at, but I just wanted to take the opportunity, since it is the last meeting of this year, to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Kwanzaa, and just generally happy and safe holidays, and thank my colleagues for all the work that they've put in in what has continued to be a very difficult process as we struggle through another year of the pandemic. Thank you. And staff as well, of course, I always thank and appreciate staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I was going to call up Chief Launcey, because I asked him to give us a report on the issues that the fire department has been dealing with because of this tremendous storm that we just had, and I wonder if he's there, and then we'll continue with council comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Sylvia Launcey, your fire chief. I know it is hard to believe, but we actually had a predictive storm, and it actually showed up for once. Since about 4:00 AM this morning and lasting until about 3:00 PM this afternoon, the majority of Southern California saw a steady and at times heavy weather pattern that brought rain, wind, and snow to the higher elevations. The closest rain gauge that I found here to the City of Glendale is near Brand Park, and it showed 3.26 inches of rain today collected. Our city and all the departments were well-prepared to mitigate the challenges that came with the storm. Our Public Works Department had sand and sandbags available at three locations, Dunsborough Park, Chevy Chase Library, and Brand Park, as well as all nine of our fire stations had sandbags available for our residents. As an added layer of preparedness, we activated our emergency operations center to a Level 3 activation, which is a monitoring level activation. We did deactivate it this afternoon at 3:30. All of our field and operational departments, including our police, fire, Glendale Water and Power, and of course, Public Works, remained busy throughout the day responding to emergencies and other calls for service. On average, just to, to show the comparison, on average, Verdugo dispatches an average day about 230 incidents, and when I left the office this afternoon at about 4:00, we were already north of 270 for the day, so that's only half the day. GWP did have a primary neutral line become compromised, which caused a local outage, but thanks to their outstanding work, they were able to quickly make the repairs and restore power to the area affected. Our firefighters responded to multiple vehicle accidents, flooding calls, and a garage fire, which we were able to also quickly contain. And our Public Works Department remained busy clearing the streets from fallen trees and limbs, as well as a few small minor slides along Chevy Chase Canyon that encroached the roadway, as well as other miscellaneous flooding calls. All have been mitigated at this time. All in all, we fared fairly well. I think our preventative efforts and the fact that the storm was fairly steady and not so much heavy at any one time helped us to let the systems, you know, the drainage systems do their job, and that's the end of my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments? I know the last time we had a heavy storm, we had trees down and landslides and hillsides coming down, and I guess this time we were lucky.
I'd like to say we were prepared, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Better, better word. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, Chief. Councilmember Najarian or Agajanian, do you have comments? Council comments, any?
No.
Okay. All right, then let's move on. The next item?
Next item is community event announcements, three-minute portion. I do have a caller, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Aram Stepanian, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Aram.
Yes, my name is Aram Stepanian, and I'd like to bring to your attention that Mr. Ambrodi yesterday, last week, made a comment about the fees, about the garbage collection. What he did not mention, that there's a franchise fee of about 33.08% that the City of Glendale will be collecting from the, the people, essentially, home providers, and which will ultimately end up with the tenants. I don't understand why the City of Glendale should be in the business of collecting franchise fees. You've already collected close to a million dollars from the contractors to sign this contract. At some point, these people are going to have to recoup their costs. I just don't see why we should be doing this. A government is supposed to be serving the people, not in the business of profit. 33.08% franchise fee? I find that to be totally wrong. My garbage fee will go up by 427%, that's like 4.27x more that I have to pay. I think what you people are not realizing, that the salaries are not going up, the people that are living in these units are not making four times more. We are in an inflationary period. You seem to totally discount this fact. I find this to be rather amusing. I find that the council, not all of you, some of you just totally be out of touch in reality. And the last comment I wanted to make is that when somebody comes in and makes a comment on a general comment, you know, it seems as if you all listen, but you're not hearing us. And that's a disconnect between the council and the people that live on, you know, in this city and work every day to make a living. You have the luxury of making comments for as long as you want to, and yet, some of us who are very truly concerned, we have certain time limitations as to how much we could talk, and I find that to be totally contrary to what a government should be doing for the people. So I urge you to, for Mr. Ambrodi to go back and correct his comment that he made last time. There's a lot more fees involved that meets the eye. I read the contract very thoroughly, and maybe the council members should do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ambrodi, would you like to comment on that 33% and any of the other comments that this gentleman raised?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we commissioned a study of our, to come up with our franchise fee and what's called AB 939 fee. Because we're franchising out this operation, we are losing that revenue. We're giving it to the franchisees who are coming into our city and providing that service. So the franchise fee is designed to recoup the cost that's associated with the impact to our streets, to our pavement, the, all the stormwater regulation, NPDES, as it's known, the EPA requirements, street tree maintenance. So there's a lot of elements that go along with the franchise fee. The franchise fee that was calculated was actually 11.66%, not 33%. However, there is an additional component, which is the AB 939 fee. That's by State of California's determination, cities can charge that for managing the implementation of the franchising process. So before, we had a open permit system, and we were charging the AB 939, AB 939 fee, which was about 20%, and based on the calculation of the, our consultant, the AB 939 fee went up by about 1.4% to 21.4%. So the number that Mr. Stepanian is referring to, it's the combination of the franchise fee and the AB 939 fee that add up to about 33%. However, again, as I mentioned, the AB 939 fee, we've always had, it just went up by about a 1.4%. The franchise fee was to compensate for transferring the, we're not getting the revenues from collecting the trash, we're transferring it to the franchisees, and it's for the impacts that it has to a lot of general maintenance that we would have to do as a result of the franchise coming into the City of Glendale.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that the only call we have?
Madam Mayor, I do have one more caller that just called in.
Okay, all right.
Edmund, you have three minutes. Edmund, I don't have your last name. You have three minutes, go ahead.
I don't want to disclose my last name, just for privacy reasons.
Go ahead, Edmund, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, good morning, councilmembers. My name is Edmund. I'm calling because I just don't want to see Glendale becoming an example of the City of Los Angeles. I'd like to mention about the vaccine ordinance that the City of Los Angeles has that Glendale's, that I'm just hoping Glendale doesn't have. Here's what I've noticed, the problem with vaccines. I've noticed that the vaccines, is that those that I've, those that are vaccinated, it's not going to stop the virus. And the second thing I'd like to also mention is that City of Los Angeles requires proof of vaccinations for people to enter indoor restaurant establishments, and I'm just hoping that Glendale doesn't do the same. Because of the fact that restaurant owners are complaining that this ordinance, like in the City of Los Angeles, they're complaining that they're experiencing huge losses of customers, like never before, and I'm just hoping the City of Glendale does not go forward with any, any vaccine like that. The other thing that I'd like to mention is that I've been hearing that firefighters, police officers are quitting in record numbers like we've never seen before because the county's requiring vaccinations, and most people do not feel comfortable getting the vaccine because they're concerned about injuries. I myself am not vaccinated because I'm extremely concerned about injuries. The problem that I see with vaccines is that the injuries have been, like widely been ignored by the government, and nothing is being done to address it, and I just don't think we need a vaccine requirement. The mask should be enough, nothing more, nothing less. I don't have a problem wearing a mask, and it doesn't bother me, and it should not bother anyone else. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more calls?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any more callers.
Okay. I just want to say to our viewers that Edmund is, is more than permitted to make his comments, but I must say, he, he's correct. Vaccines do not stop the virus, especially not the Omicron. But if you are, if you become affected or infected or have, get the virus, your symptoms are much milder, and they are finding now that most people that are dying from this virus are unvaccinated. So I urge everybody, and I'm still urging everyone out there, get vaccinated for yourself, for your family, for your friends, for, for everyone else. So thank you. And let's go on to the next item. That's all I'm going to say. Next item?
Next item is seven, adoption of ordinances. A management services regarding an ordinance of the city, of the council of the City of Glendale, providing for certain officers, subordinates, officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the City of Glendale, establishing officer positions in the City of Glendale entitled Fire Chief Deputy City Manager and. Director of Finance and Information Technology. Renaming the Director of Human Resources classification to Chief Human Resources Officer and establishing compensations for specified position was introduced by Councilmember Kasakian on December seventh, 2021.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian, would you like to move this item?
Yes, Mayor, I would. I would move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item.
B is management services regarding an ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, California, amending Title II of the Glendale Municipal Code nineteen ninety-five by amending sections two dot zero eight dot zero seven zero, two dot zero eight dot one three zero, two dot three one dot zero one zero, two dot three one dot zero two zero, and two dot eight two dot one two zero pertaining to the Department of Administrative Services, Finance, and Information Technology Department, introduced by Councilmember Kasakian on December seventh, 2021.
Thank you. We don't need any explanation or report. Are we ready to move this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move the item.
Second, okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. And the next item.
C would be community development regarding an urgency ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, California, establishing interim standards and ministerial processes for reviewing and approving eligible SB nine projects and setting minimum SB four seventy-eight floor area racial standards for certain multifamily housing development projects. Introduced by Councilmember Agajanian on December seventh, 2021.
I move the item.
Is there any discussion necessary on this item?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Najarian.
Mr. Landis Faim or Ms. Asp, whoever can answer. I just want to be clear on the, the regulations contained in this ordinance regarding the restrictions in historic districts, as well as the particular issue of requiring use of the main residence driveway and not creating another driveway for the additional unit. Can someone address both of those? We spoke about it a little bit last week, but I want to be certain that I'm clear.
The, the ordinance, and in fact, the bill SB nine excludes historic districts from using this tool. That is, no design review exemption and a lot split ministerially in historic districts. You could still build an ADU under our ordinance, under our code, in a historic district. There are some standards to that and we generally like to make sure that it's compatible with the home. Usually they're, they're garage conversions, so we want them to look like a garage as you're looking down the driveway. But the SB nine product, project is not allowed in a historic district.
So no ministerial lot split, essentially that's what the SB nine does. And it permits an ADU on the main home as well as two units on the split lot, correct?
Yes, but what, what we prefer to call them is SB nine units. Because you do, you, it's different than an ADU. It, it can be its own house. On the same lot, but it's a house. That can be done ministerially under SB nine. No design review, you can build it back there. The ADU doesn't have any design review either, but it's a little bit different, little bit different rules. ADUs are allowed in the historic districts, SB nine projects are not. And the real difference is going to be that lot split.
And there was some discussion last week about the, the terrain and the issues of a CUP that was, that's otherwise required, but with the SB nine not required. Is that, can you clarify that for me, please?
Good evening, Councilmember Najarian. There is no, just to be clear, there is no CUP required for any development in the hillsides for anything that exceeds fifty percent or fifteen hundred cubic yards of grading.
For anything, no CUP for anything that exceeds fifteen hundred yards of grading?
Fifty percent slope or fifteen hundred cubic yards of grading.
Slope or?
And it's been close to a decade since we've required that.
So if you're over fifty percent or you're over fifteen hundred yards grading?
There's no, there's no requirement for a conditional use permit for any threshold in the hillsides.
Oh, for any threshold?
Correct, correct.
So a lot can be created out of a steep hillside under SB nine?
Potentially, that's correct.
And if I can add, Councilman Najarian, it's our view right now, and then again, this is so new that we're all trying to get our head around this, but it's our view that right now, you could not impose that as a development standard, just say you can't build on a slope greater than fifty percent, or if you're going to grade more than fifteen hundred yards, if it's going to preclude an eight hundred square foot unit. And since that's, that's our requirement anyway, we don't think that we can impose any additional standards that would preclude this type of, this type of development. Now, if you had a particular slope that the building official could make a determination it's not safe to build on that slope under the existing health and safety standards at the time the application comes in, then that's something they could consider. But as a, as a straight development standard that you'd apply, yes or no, we don't think that, that you can apply that in that manner.
So, I mean, I see problems with that, but what you're saying is that we don't have the ability to go that far to prevent and add additional layers of oversight when our typical construction process doesn't require the CUP? I think that's what you were telling us last week.
Correct.
I mean, I'm a little uneasy about that, but I'm not sure that means that I'm against this, this ordinance, but I'm just wondering if there's some way we can prevent, you know, crazy hillside development under SB nine and we just have to throw up our hands?
Correct. And, and we certainly understand the concern. And what I would say is, this is an interim ordinance. We, we want to draft it in a way that we believe complies. It's something we can continue to look at and we're looking at what other cities are doing as well. And we'll, when we bring back the permanent ordinance, we'll continue to study those issues. But we don't see a way that, that you can impose that as a, as a development standard, that a precluded development of an SB nine unit absent some more specific evidence that that particular construction is going to have, have a health or safety impact. And by health or safety impact, I mean an actual, it's going to violate an existing health or safety standard.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Okay, because I had a question. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Oh, I wanted to pick up, because I was going to ask the same.
Me too. Go ahead.
Okay. So, so right now, if, if, outside of SB nine, if I want to build on a, on a slope that's greater than fifty percent, if I want to put an addition on my house, let's say, on a slope that's greater than fifty percent, I have, there's no CUP, but I have to go through design review?
Depending, Councilmember Brotman, depending on the size of the addition, it could be something that's a design review exemption and just goes into a standard plan check, meets all building and safety codes, and is issued a permit. If it exceeds a certain threshold, there's the design review threshold that, that it would require it to go to the board.
And why did we eliminate the CUP?
It was sort of a redundant, you know, I'm sort of speculating, it was a redundant process of, of a planning hearing officer, zoning administrator, reviewing something just for slope, and then having it turn into, then having it, if approved, go to the design review board. Thought we could consolidate sort of that review, but the design review board looks at site planning and, you know, working within the topography of, of what the condition is and evaluating that all at one time in the design review, you know, bigger umbrella.
Yeah, if I could just provide some color commentary to that. So essentially, you'd have to have it go through the CP process for that. And many times, that would lead all the way to appeals up to the council, and then they'd go have to go through design review and through the same process. And the council at the time that eliminated the process felt that that was, as Ms. Asp said, redundant and overly time consuming.
Okay. And, and you're saying that, that requiring or prohibiting SB nine projects on a slope that's more than fifty percent, that, that's not an objective design standard? I mean, it's, it's clearly objective, but why is that not a design standard?
Or a zoning standard?
It is. Let me have Yvette try to answer that and I'll add something.
Councilmember Brotman, Mayor Devine, and members of council, the SB nine statute specifically states that a city is not allowed to enact any standards that would prohibit at least eight hundred square foot unit, at two eight hundred square foot units under SB nine. So it, it is objective, I agree with you. However, it is not a design standard in the sense that it does not dictate an applicant to do something or not do something. It outright prohibits the development. At least that was the suggestion from the various groups that wrote in to council. Certainly, we can look at, for the permanent ordinance, we can look at some additional requirements that slopes that are greater than fifty percent would have to comply with. And certainly, we can, in consultation with the building official, we can see what additional layers of protection we can add. But outright prohibiting them, we feel, is not consistent with the intent and the letter of SB nine at this moment.
Okay, okay. Well, yeah, I, I think there are a number of us who probably would like you to come back and tell us more about that, because there is a lot of concern about, you know, hillside development. And I guess I, I always had heard from people that, oh, you can't build on a slope that's more than fifty, fifty percent. I guess that's old history and people haven't kind of caught up with, with these changes even after a decade. But there's a lot of concern. So if we could, if we could look at that.
Yes, we will certainly.
Soon as, you know.
So is, can I just follow up with that? Is that something that we should delay pass approving this ordinance and let you look at those changes first? Or would you rather that we?
We wouldn't.
Ordinance in place now and then you would look at it?
Mayor Devine, we, we would urge you to enact the ordinance because otherwise we'd be left with no standards. It's not just the slope issue. There's a lot of other things in this ordinance that offers additional protections, one of them being that eight hundred square foot limit.
Okay, okay then.
Madam Mayor.
We'll rely on you to continue to wa, look at this. Yes?
Madam Mayor, if it, if it gives you any comfort, just the economics of building an eight hundred square foot unit on a hillside where there's significant grading, it just doesn't make economic sense. Somebody could do it, but it doesn't make economic sense to do it. You wouldn't have the value of the home once you finish. But we can look at that, we can look at some type of standard as we look at, in, in the longer term, when we go back and do something more permanent.
I think that seems like what my colleagues would like for you to do. Hearing that, then, is there a motion for this item?
I think there already was a motion.
Madam Mayor, it was moved by Councilmember Agajanian. We're waiting for a second.
Agajanian, all right.
I'll give a second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. Thank you. And next item?
Next item would be eight action items, eight A management services regarding twenty-twenty census results for the City of Glendale, one motion to note and file report.
All right. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Devine, members of city council, this report is presented to you tonight in response to Councilmember Kasakian's request. And it's based on the available information that we have currently. There's more detail that we're hoping will be released in spring of next year, at which time we'll, we'll bring back an updated report. With that, I'm going to invite Christine Power, our senior executive analyst, to present the report to you.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, councilmembers. As you know, the United States Census Bureau conducted the twenty-twenty census last year to count every person in the country. And this was the first year that the census was available online, as well as the more traditional options of paper and phone. The efforts of the Census Bureau were hindered by many limitations pertaining to the ongoing pandemic, pandemic, as well as nationwide political issues. As you may recall, the Census Bureau had been in the process of following up on non-responsive households to complete its count when it was announced that counting efforts would end sooner than previously announced. Part of this report, exhibit one, does contain a copy of the actual census questions, just to remind everyone that what questions are asked on the census form, this includes the person's sex, age, race, and ethnic origin, and household makeup. As Mr. Galanian mentioned, the Census Bureau has only released limited amount of inner information, and this is to facilitate redistricting efforts in states and cities and counties. And so the information that we have here today is what's been released. And as he mentioned, the Census Bureau anticipates releasing the remainder of the information in the spring, although no date has been set at this time. So with that.
Go ahead.
There we go. Okay. So these are the large census results. As you can see, there is a seven point three five percent increase in the United States population and a corresponding six point one three percent increase in California's population with over thirty-nine million people. This provides you with a comparison of neighboring and similar cities. You will see that, for the most part, everyone is in line as far as population growth from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. The City of Santa Clarita really is an anomaly because they, they go through several annexations every year. And so this, their population growth, in addition to the ability, they have open space to build more homes, a lot of this does have to do with annexation of neighboring communities. As far as the occupancy status, according to the Census Bureau, the City of Glendale has a total of eighty thousand one hundred and ninety-three units, ninety-six percent of which are occupied. And that's very similar to the county's ninety-five percent occupancy rate they have. So as far as race, you have here, there are several breakdowns, and one of the exhibits does provide more detailed information, once you get into a population of two or more races, what those racial makeups are. But for simplicity's sake, this is how people identify as far as when they identify as one race alone. In the City of Glendale, sixty-five percent of residents identify as white. And as we know here in our community, that does include an Armenian minority. There was an effort by the Armenian-American Complete Count Committee to get residents to identify as Armenian and fill it in on the census form. We have yet to collect that information and see what that looks like. The most recent information we have on what our population of Armenians looks like in the City of Glendale would be based on American community surveys, which don't count everyone, they're just surveys. And that's at about thirty-five, thirty-seven percent as of twenty-nineteen. Our black population, or African American alone, is two percent, American Indian and Alaska Native, that number translates into half a percent. Our Asian community is fifteen percent. Our native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander is less than a tenth of a percent. Those who identified as some other race alone are eight percent, and two or more races would be nine percent. Comparatively, in LA County, the white population is thirty-three percent, the black population is eight percent, American Indian and Alaska Native is less than two percent, the Asian population is fifteen percent, native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander is less than a third of a percent. Those who identify as some other race alone in the county are twenty-eight percent, and two or more races as fifteen percent. Now you'll see that Hispanic or Latino and not Hispanic or Latino by race is a separate question. The concept of race is separate from the concept of Hispanic origin. And so the percentages from the previous slide add up to a hundred percent, and they're not combined with these. They do, once you identify as Hispanic or Latino, you then go on to identify your race, and this is reported differently. Those numbers don't add up to a hundred percent. So here, this is just something we look at separately. For the City of Glendale, seventeen percent of our population identify as Hispanic or Latino, and eighty-three percent identify as not Hispanic or Latino. And in comparison, forty-eight percent of LA County overall identifies as Hispanic or Latino. And in comparison, 48% of LA County overall identifies as Hispanic or Latino with 50%, 52% not. And then the last thing I'd like to share with you at this time is our population change by census tract. I am going to switch over to a PDF that we can zoom in on, but this will show you what our population looks like by census tract and how it's changed over the course of the last 10 years. So if you just give me one second here.
Christine, I will end sharing from my point.
Okay, thank you. There we go. Well, I'm going to skip up to the top of the city. You see some small percentage increases. The 2%, 3% in speaking with our planning department, you can really attribute that to ADUs and just some population growth. We do have this anomaly here in Spar Heights that we've been trying to figure out why we have a almost 11% increase in this neighborhood. There hasn't been any significant development to accommodate this increase. So some things that could, and we're going to explore this some more, but some things that could attribute to this is previous underreporting. There are also some units in the work, so if the census made some sort of error in assuming that these were the units that were occupied and now online, that could also be the case. But we will be looking into this percentage increase because it is a little odd for the area, given no development. And so you'll see here, you have some slight upticks in the census tracts in the College Hills and Chevy Chase and Rossmoyn. And then when you get down to South Glendale, you will see, and the bright green is where you have the largest increases. These do correspond with development that has occurred throughout the city over the course of the past 10 years. You do see some slight decreases. This, units haven't been taken away, so this can be attributed to just underreporting and people not being willing to participate in the census. Once we get more information, we can break the census tracks down so that it's not just reflecting population change, but we can look at things like male, female, age, household makeups, because one of the questions in the census asks you, who do you live with? What is your relation to this person? So that information will be interesting to get at some point next year. This map will go on our city website. We do have a page with information from the last census. So we will be updating that page as we have information, and this will be available to the public. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Mr., go ahead, Mr. Kasakian.
Thank you. I asked for this report because, as I told staff during the briefing, the statistics are going to tell the story of Glendale and are going to help guide our visioning and planning for this council and future councils as we look at where we've had growth, where we've had a loss of population, what type of growth have we had? Have we had more families? Have we, do we have an aging population, et cetera? All these things are critical to how we cast votes, what issues we decide to tackle. I am looking forward to the information being available by, I believe you said, spring? Is that correct, Ms. Powers?
That is the estimate that the Census Bureau is providing at this time. Yes, Councilmember Kasakian?
Well, I would like to see someone on staff be tasked with being the census czar and making sure that we, as soon as we have this information, that we're able to process it, analyze it, glean from it whatever we can to guide us. As I said, this has to be our North Star. The information is very important in looking at this map, which wasn't in the staff briefing. There's a lot of questions that come up that I'm interested in getting the answers to. And one additional thing that I believe that we should all be aware of is that as the census numbers, the census is conducted, in order to do reapportionment and to draw new political lines for the representatives that we have in Washington DC, as well as in Sacramento, for whatever reason, the nonpartisan redistricting commission has chosen for our Assembly District, and the Senate boundaries have not yet been revealed or have not come out yet. They will soon, in the next few days, I believe. Our city is being split between possibly three, at least two, but possibly three Assembly Districts. And I believe that's a big issue, and it's a problem for us, and it's something that we ought to speak out on in one voice as a council and as well as, you know, ask staff to write a letter, asking that Glendale be kept whole within one single Assembly District for no other reason, for the sake of when we're asking our representatives to fight for us, secure funding for us, it is much simpler to go to one individual versus to go to two or three different individuals who may look at Glendale as maybe not as important, a part of their district. So that's a point I'd like to bring up. I'd like us to hopefully agree on that and ask staff to write a letter to the redistricting commission and to whoever else we need to, saying that it is Glendale's desire to have our city remain whole in whatever district we end up in.
Ms. Powers, if I may, can you hear me?
Yes.
Haven't we already written a letter to that effect? And I know that I spoke to the redistricting committee, I believe it was Friday, on the same issue, that Glendale wants to remain whole and that we also want to remain with the tri-city. So, but we can always go at it again because I think it's worth, worth speaking up about. And I know that I've been asked to speak on it again, and I will. And should, if my colleagues agree, we can perhaps write another letter?
Yes, Mayor Devine, members of council.
I think it's important, Madam Mayor, for us to be, I think it's important, I appreciate the efforts that you've put in, but I think it's important for the public to know this, and it's important for us to publicly state our position.
I'm not disputing that. I'm not disputing that. I agree, I agree.
Mayor Devine, if I may. So the direction that was provided by council at a previous meeting was to advocate for Glendale to remain whole and to remain with the tri-cities when it came to the supervisory district. I will defer to Mr. Garcia, but it seems like there is enough direction from council that council has expressed that whatever the district may be, that Glendale would remain whole and not get split into various districts. And so perhaps based on previous council direction, we can move forward with a letter at this time.
Right. I agree, and I think my colleagues would probably agree as well.
Yes, I do. But I also understand there's very little time. I mean, aren't they finalizing the map in the next day or two?
Like Saturday?
Yep, yes.
Saturday.
Okay.
We can get that letter out tomorrow, council member.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I wish, I wish we had started this process sooner. It's one of the reasons why I kept bringing the census issue up. I know that some of these numbers that were made available earlier, and I know that this is something that happens once every 10 years, so staff may not be accustomed to making this a priority, given the day-to-day repetitive needs and activities and work of the staff. But this is of the utmost critical importance, given how much money we rely on from the state and from the federal government to make up for some of the shortfalls within our own revenue stream here locally. One other question I do want to ask is that in, when you presented the report, Ms. Powers, you mentioned that there is approximately 3,300 units that are unoccupied in the city. To what can we attribute that, given the fact that there is a housing shortage? What would mean, why would there be unoccupied, that high of a number of unoccupied units?
I believe that would just be apartments that were unoccupied. There are homes that are vacant throughout the city, certainly not a lot, but there are enough that I know that Sacramento was actually considering legislation of penalizing people who kept homes vacant. So certainly, there are homes and units that are vacant, and it seems to track with the county numbers. We can certainly dig into what attributes to those vacancy rates, but some of it, I assume, would also be the, some of the larger apartment units that have been brought online that maybe aren't completely full or have some, some level of turnover.
If I may.
I mean, that is a large number of units, Madam Mayor, and my colleagues. To find out why we have 3,300 unoccupied units, I think, is critical for us to address some of the housing needs. I understand that there may be some outlier reasons as to why some units may be vacant, but in as much as we can incentivize for folks to have those units occupied by someone who may need housing, I think it's to our overall benefit, especially when future developments are coming before us and we're explaining to folks that we have to comply with RENA numbers, and yet we have 3,300 units that are unoccupied. I would like to know the reason why. In terms of how we find that out, I don't know, but apparently the census has found out. So if there's a way for us to find out as well, either by unpaid utilities or utilities from which we're not generating some sort of return or income, I would like to ask staff to put their thinking caps on and get to the bottom of where those units are and what type of units they are. And there may, there may be an absolutely legitimate reason, and I don't know how it tracks with neighboring cities in terms of vacancies, but it is something that caught my attention in this brief report.
Madam Mayor.
It's also a factor that may be mitigated with this purchasing of all of these units for workforce housing, and that may be a way of mitigating this issue. Did I hear, can I have the council back on my screen, please? Thank you.
May I ask a question about that?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Brotman.
That point, because I think, you know, it sounds like a big number, but I think it's a small percentage, and I think we actually have a very high occupancy rate, isn't it? If somebody could speak to that, because there's a certain natural amount of vacancies that, just like job vacancies, you know, when there's turnover. I, the number struck me, actually, Councilmember Kasakian, it struck me as a relatively small number. So can, what are you from, maybe Mr. Lansaffain, say something about that?
I'm sure I'm advised about six point.
Let everybody talk at the same time, please.
It's 4%.
Mr. Lansaffain?
4%.
Mr. Lansaffain?
I'd come up with about 6.8% on 48,000 multifamily units. It's much less if you look at the total units, about 80,000.
So about 4%. So what would it be for the total?
For 3,300, if it's 80,000 units, it's 4%.
Would that be considered, you know, just historically? Is that a small number?
What's the average?
I mean, we typically will figure in a multifamily project a 5% to 10% vacancy rate.
Just because of natural friction?
Turnover.
And don't forget, there's also probably, to some extent, undercount there. If, again, if people do not respond to the census, despite the multiple attempts that people, the census does to reach out to individuals, they won't report it even if they have a utility bill or anything like that. They need to actually verify that individuals live in a, in a unit before they count that unit as unvacant.
So they may say it's vacant simply because somebody hasn't responded.
Correct.
Okay.
But the number could be less. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I do have a caller for this item.
Okay, let's take the caller now while we take a break. Go ahead.
Herbert Milano, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Herbert.
Thank you very much. Mayor Devine, members of the city council, this is Herbert Milano. I'm very glad that the council has taken up the issue of the census and the, and began the process of looking at what the data is giving us. I'm hoping that the city moves forward with being a data-driven or data-centric policymaking city. Mr. Kasakian's observations were practically the observations that I had written up. So it was pretty amazing to hear him address the various issues that I've, that I wanted the city council to address, particularly the issues that pertain to me, quite a bit, which is the vacancy rate, housing units, and the policies that the city council derives from this data. It is my hope that the city council does not signal to the staff any preference or any bias unintended with regard to what numbers you would like to see. I think that the, the process should be completely neutral without any pre-indication as to what the numbers may indicate. So you have a 4% vacancy factor, you have roughly 77,000 housing units that should be considered in the process of evaluating other things that you will discuss in the budget. So it is my hope that the city takes the census information and the results of the CAFR and the information that is acceptable in the statistical section of the CAFR, to begin to define policy going forward. And the fact that this only happens every 10 years when we can get reliable data, I think you have a especially important policymaking procedure come April or May when you start discussing the budget. And it is my hope, and I know Mr. Kasakian has that particular inclination, and Mr. Brotman as well, that being data-driven, data-centric, being unbiased with regard to the expectations of what these things may mean are really important setting city policy. And I applaud the city for taking this thing on forward. Thank you very much. I got an unexpected call.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Milano. Okay, so where are we with this? We have the census results. I also kind of, if I can, observe that in that map that you showed with the unreported numbers, percentages that went down, and it's, you know, it's kind of a mystery why. If that happened all over our state, that certainly does explain why we've lost a seat in the, in the House of Representatives. So it's kind of a sad state of affairs. Anyway, so we will continue to investigate, Ms. Powers, the.
Ms. Devine.
Councilmember Kasakian's questions and requests. Did you have something else, Mr. Kasakian? Mute? Unmute?
Councilmember Agajanian has his hand up. That's all.
Councilmember Agajanian, go ahead.
I just want to comment, I mean, it's not, I mean, I was in the city for a very long time, over 40 years, that I cannot imagine, like in 2010, they were saying the population of Glendale is 198,000, and then census said 191,000. Now, for a while, we are saying our population of Glendale is 205,000 and more, or 207,000, and now we came back to 196,543. And also, this year, State Department of Finance even said that the population is at least 203,834. I don't know. I mean, these are governmental entities. And how this works, I mean, all the time, the estimation is not what has been said or predicted or others, they did the work. I mean, we ended up with State Department of Finance with 203,834, and Census Bureau with 196,543. This year was pandemic, of course, was harder, but also the computer system and what they have, this Census Bureau, it became so advanced, and the way they are following is so advanced. I don't know what, how this happens. We went to 205, and then we came to 203, and now we're in 196. I just wanted to be on the record that I don't believe the population of Glendale is 196, I think it's more. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, with those issues more or less resolved, do we have a motion to note and file?
Mr. Kasakian?
Yes, I will move to note and file this report.
Sec.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, and let's make sure we get those, those letters out as soon as possible. Next item?
Next item would be 8B Public Works Regarding Professional Services Agreement for Glendale Los Angeles Garden River Bridge Project for Professional Engineering Environmental Document and Construction Management Services.
Document and Construction Management Services. One, Motion Authorizing the City Manager or Designee to Execute a Professional Service Agreement with Biggs Cardosa Associates Incorporated to Provide Professional Engineering Environmental Document and Construction Management Services for Glendale, Los Angeles Garden River Bridge Project in the Amount of three million, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-nine, plus a 10% contingency of three hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars. Two, Resolution of Appropriation Providing Adequate Funding for This Professional Services Agreement.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, uh, Mayor Divine, Member of City Council, this is, uh, another one of our, uh, exciting projects that, uh, we started working on since two thousand and fifteen. This was part of the Glendale Narrows Riverwalk Master Plan, uh, and I'm going to invite Sarkis Organesian, our Principal Civil Engineer, to, uh, provide this presentation that will cover some history background as a refresher, as well as the action item in front of you to, to hire the, uh, recommended consultant. Sarkis?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of City Council. We have a brief presentation that will highlight the current project and provide a quick detail of the RFP process that resulted in this agenda item for a professional services agreement. The project is the Glendale, Los Angeles Garden River Bridge Project. The project lead on this will be the City of Glendale. It is a, uh, budget, uh, it is a project that is currently budgeted at approximately thirty-five and a half million dollars. It's located in the Upper Los Angeles River Watershed area, and it also falls inside of the City of Los Angeles Supervisory District Five. This is a map of the Glendale Narrows Riverwalk. Phase one, which was completed in approximately two thousand and twelve, is a solid yellow area to the west, northwest. Phase two, the dashed yellow area, was completed in two thousand and eighteen. And phase three is the topic of this, uh, professional services agreement, which is the Glendale, uh, LA Garden River Bridge, which is shown in the red alignment. This is an aerial overview of approximately where the new bridge will be located. It'll span, uh, from the City of Glendale boundary at Fairmont and Flower and go across the river to the City of Los Angeles boundary, across from the Ferraro Soccer Fields, uh, adjacent to Zoo Drive. The scope of work for the project will include a three hundred and twenty-foot curved linear bridge. It'll most likely be a box girder structure. It'll have safety railings, safety lighting, access gates, trash receptacles, and it'll be approximately fourteen feet wide. Uh, it'll have two shaded seating viewing pods, uh, for shade trees, landscaping, uh, signage. Uh, those viewing pods will be approximately forty-five feet in diameter. Um, it'll have a, uh, entire curved linear planter along the length of the bridge. It'll be a bicycle and pedestrian bridge, uh, and it'll have proper signing and striping. The bridge landing, uh, in the Glendale area will require a realignment of the Riverwalk path that was recently constructed. Uh, and the bridge landing in the Los Angeles area will also require a realignment of their Los Angeles River bike path, and it'll create an ADA access ramp, um, stairs, and a pedestrian crossing to the Ferraro Soccer Fields. The next two slides are a few bridge section renderings and images of what the proposed bridge will look like. Uh, the upper portion is a cross-section of the width of the bridge at the canopied areas, and the bottom portion is an aerial perspective of what the structure will look like. On this slide, uh, is, is a more detailed image of what the, uh, canopied seating areas will look like or may look like, and the bottom slide is a picture of the underbelly of the bridge from the LA River. We will be studying a few lighting concepts as part of this, uh, project, uh, and, uh, these are a few renderings of what those lighting concepts may or may not look like. Uh, they'll be tied to holidays, uh, days of the year, uh, and, uh, they'll be visible from the freeway. So the current progress on the project, we have successfully appropriated, uh, Prop sixty-eight funds and Proposition C funds for this project in the amount of twenty-two and a half million dollars. We've execute, executed a Section two-one-four agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. What this is, is essentially an agreement that will expedite the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers' Plan Check, uh, when we are ready to submit our plans to them for review. Uh, we've advertised a professional, uh, engineering services, uh, request for proposals in May of two thousand and twenty-one. We've reviewed and interviewed three consultant teams who had an average of approximately nine separate firms in each team, and we are getting ready, uh, to award a contract for an environmental and design services, uh, tonight. The expectations moving forward is that we expect to begin the environmental phase sometime in spring of two thousand and twenty-two. By the time the contracts are set up, we'll be, uh, able to begin. We expect to obtain the final environmental clearance document sometime in September of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we will, uh, be completing the plans, specifications, and estimates in July of two thousand and twenty-five, of which afterwards, we expect to, uh, bid and award a construction contract for the bridge in February of two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, amongst that process, we will be establishing various agreements, such as land use agreements with the City of LA, and operation and maintenance agreements with the City of LA, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as well as LA County, and, uh, we are anticipating completing construction in July of two thousand and twenty-eight. The community outreach that's been done, uh, for the Glendale Narrows Riverwalk, um, took place in two thousand and eleven, when the Riverwalk Master Plan was finalized. Then in two thousand and fourteen, there were various workshops introduced, um, and conducted for the, this phase three of the project, uh, and those workshops ultimately developed this Garden River Bridge concept. After our, after we begin, uh, our environmental, uh, phase, uh, we will have an environmental document public outreach sometime in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, when the environmental document is close to a draft, uh, final approval, um, we will have a public hearing sometime in two thousand and twenty-three. At approximately thirty percent, uh, design, we'll have another public meeting, um, and public outreach event in two thousand and twenty-three, followed by a final public outreach event in, uh, two thousand and twenty-four at the ninety percent design. The consultant will also create a dedicated project website, which will, uh, host, um, as, which will be hosted as a, uh, public portal to this project for the entirety of the project. Here's a breakdown, uh, of the project, uh, description, the phases, uh, the funding and the costs. Uh, so as you can see, Proposition sixty-eight funds are approximately twenty million. Uh, we have two thousand and fifteen call for project funds or Proposition C funds in the amount of three million. Uh, we were notified that we've received, uh, Assembly Bill one-seventy funds, part of the state budget, in the amount of ten million. Um, and, uh, we are also slated to receive Measure R subregional funds for approximately three million. And that all adds up to a total project cost of thirty-five and a half million dollars. Regarding the consultant selection for tonight's agenda item, uh, as I had indicated prior, we received three proposals, uh, and each proposal team, uh, contained an average of nine companies. Uh, the proposals that were, uh, received, they were reviewed, uh, by a six-member panel, which was comprised of the Public Works Department, the Community Development Department, as well as a City of Los Angeles staff member. Uh, the panel selected Biggs Cardosa Associates team. Uh, we held various negotiations, of which, uh, we were successful in lowering their fee an additional five percent. Uh, the, the Biggs Cardosa Associates team, uh, has had very successful bridge project references in Southern California. A few of them to name here are the Burbank Chandler Bike Way Extension Bridge, the Norwalk Firestone Boulevard Bridge Replacement, uh, as well as the Santa Fe Springs Rose, Rosecrans Grade Separation Bridge. That concludes my presentation. If you guys, if, if, if there's any questions by the council, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Uh, council, questions?
I have a question.
Uh, Councilmember Brotman, go ahead.
Um, and I'm sure this is a stupid question, but why does it take seven and a half more years to do this? What, I mean, and, and I guess it's been go, so that'll make the whole thing from, I guess, the original, I guess, uh, planning documents that was two thousand and eleven? Wow. So what, what is it? Why does it take so long?
So, Councilmember Brotman, in two thousand and eleven, after the Riverwalk, uh, Master Plan was finalized, um, uh, the Community Services and Parks Department was able to, uh, get phase one going. Uh, it was a minimal cost phase. Um, at the same time, they also started implementing the master plan for the phase two and the phase three. Um, it, the phase two process built a, uh, a culvert bridge over the, uh, Verdugo Wash, so that required, uh, significant, um, uh, coordination with LA County. Um, however, the phase three bridge that we're talking about now, the reason why that took so long was, uh, the funding that was required. Um, we were, uh, attempting to get a two thousand and fifteen Tiger Grant, which would cover most of the, the bridge costs, uh, but that Tiger Grant did not come through. And so, uh, we kept on revisiting the drawing board to see how we can, uh, revisit the, the bridge drawings and the specs to be able to reduce the costs. Ultimately, we were, um, uh, assisted with Proposition sixty-eight funds, which we, uh, which, which the council appropriated actually in two thousand and nineteen. Um, and so shortly after receiving a majority of that funding, we were able to expedite the process, and, and here we are now.
But still another seven and a half years, is that just how long it takes to go through the environmental review and the construction? Seems like an awfully long time.
So the environmental review is expected to take about eighteen months, assuming that there's no, uh, adverse environmental findings. Uh, the, once the environmental review is complete, uh, because we have to deal with the Army Corps of Engineers, that also takes some substantial time as well, even though we have an expedited agreement in place, and, and we did that knowing or hoping that we can get a faster, uh, project on track. Uh, it's just the effort that it's going to take for a bridge of this size and caliber. And we will be doing everything in our part. We've actually had conversations with the consultants, um, during the interviews, if they could expedite the process and if they could present an expedited process to us, uh, if they were successfully chosen.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Hope I'm still able to get on a bicycle by the time it's done, you know?
Yeah. Um, any other questions?
I don't have a question.
Does?
I have a comment.
Councilmember Agajanian, go ahead.
I'm saying if design part of it, it took ten years to bring it to this part, which is design and securing the money, to construct it in seven years is not bad. I mean, when you compare with that ten years, because the design part would be done pretty fast. I mean, I understand the construction takes a long time, but why, but, I mean, ten years to bring it to this point is kind of a strange, anyway.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Member of City Council, if I, if I may make a clarification.
Yes, Mr. Milano, go ahead.
Uh, the, the start of phase one of the master plan that started in ten years ago, that had nothing to do with this bridge. As Mr. Organesian mentioned, phase one was completed, then phase two. The concept plan and the outreach started in two thousand and fourteen or fifteen, so that's how long it's taken. But again, funding is a huge hurdle, obviously, for a, a project of this magnitude, and, but we are here. Every time we go through an RFP process, it takes almost nine months to bring someone on board because of the processes we have in place. And then, uh, dealing with, uh, agencies outside the City of Glendale and coordination with them is, uh, quite, uh, laborious and time-consuming. Um, but, um, the, the goodness is, there is a light at the end of the bridge and, uh, we can make it happen in the next six years or so.
Government in action.
Yes, right. I, I have a couple of questions, if anyone, um, is LA splitting the funding at all with this? I mean, this bridge goes both ways. And, um, you know, at the, at the news con, press conference, the, uh, council member from, uh, that area of Los Angeles was so excited about this bridge and, uh, are, are they contributing at all?
So all the bridge, uh, Mayor Divine, uh, all the bridge funding is coming, um, from a majority of state funds. Um, it's not city funds or either city funds, just to be clear.
Okay, okay.
But Madam Mayor.
That kind of, yes?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, when, uh, when the bridge is, uh, in the last phases of its construction, or even maybe earlier, we need to enter into negotiations on the maintenance agreement that will be split between the City of Glendale and City of Los Angeles.
Okay, that makes sense. And where is, uh, the, uh, funding from, uh, Assemblywoman Friedman? Is that the, uh, Assembly Bill or where's, where, where's her funding?
Uh, that is part of a Proposition sixty-eight funding and most recently the Assembly Bill. Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would be remiss if I didn't, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that six million of the funding comes from LA Metro through the Call for Projects and the Measure R sub-funds, so Metro uses its money very widely and they do support active transportation. And this is, uh, certainly one of the categories that it, that this bridge fell under.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that. Okay, then. Um, so we need a motion authorizing the city manager to execute this, these professional.
Sure. Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll make that motion and I'll, I'll thank staff for a very, uh, well-presented report, thank you.
Yes, okay.
Okay, second.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All righty, rule call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Divine?
Yes, and the resolution?
I'll make a motion for the resolution as well. I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Second. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Divine?
Yes, the next, thank you, next item?
Next item is nine hearings at Community Development regarding fifteen seventy-five Sheridan Road, consideration of Glendale Register nomination and request for a Mills Act Historic Property Contract. One, Resolution to Designate the Residential Property at fifteen seventy-five Sheridan Road as a Historic Resource on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources as GR one-thirty-eight Burg House and authorizing the city manager to enter into a Mills Act Historical Property Contract with the property owner. Two, Motion to Deny the Request of the Property Owner to Designate the Residential Property at fifteen seventy-five Sheridan Road as a Historic Resource on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Divine, Member of City Council, it is my pleasure to introduce our newest planning associate, Casey Conley, with her debut tonight of her first presentation to City Council.
Welcome.
Welcome, Casey.
I kept telling myself, remember to press the button, and then I forgot to press the button. Uh, good evening, councilmembers, Madam Mayor. Uh, this is the Glendale Register Historic, uh, Glendale Register of Historic Resources nomination and Mills Act application for fifteen seventy-five Sheridan Road with recommended name, the Burg House. Fifteen seventy-five Sheridan Road is located in an area of the city known as Chevy Chase Canyon. The property is located north of the one-thirty-four freeway and northwest of Chevy Chase Golf Club. It sits on a nine thousand, nine hundred, uh, forty-one square foot irregular shaped upsloping lot, and the residence measures one thousand, nine hundred and seventeen square feet. Uh, this residence was originally constructed in nineteen fifty-seven for Ed and Alice Berg, remained in the home until two thousand and nineteen. It was owned briefly by Alexander Burkhold and Andrew Norman, a lawyer and composer, respectively, before being purchased by the, uh, current owner in two thousand and twenty. The residence is a modern-style post-in-beam building clad in stucco and vertical T-one-eleven siding. The building has various flat and slanted roof planes with extremely wide eve overhangs and exposed beams which extend into the interior spaces of the building. The primary street-facing facade is dominated by a carport, and the primary entrance is recessed at the eastern volume. The entrance door is surrounded by single side light and angled transom light above, and a triplet of floor-to-ceiling windows with angled headers is also, uh, visible on the primary facade. The carport is the most prominent feature visible from the public right-of-way. It has a flat roof supported by thin square posts at the eastern end, which give the illusion of a cantilever. Original storage compartments clad in T-one-eleven siding are visible at the back of the carport, and two doors along the western end once led to storage. In two thousand and nineteen, the storage space was converted to interior space to extend the bedroom addition from nineteen sixty-eight. The doors were retained on the exterior, uh, to retain the original design intent. The rear facade conveys similar design features found on the front of the building with varying walls of solid T-one-eleven siding. walls of solid T-111 siding and full-height single-pane windows. Additionally, sliding aluminum doors with thin profiles allow for an almost seamless indoor-outdoor connection. A slumstone fireplace is also visible on the eastern end of the property. A central atrium along the western side of the residence gives further outdoor connection to the interior living spaces. The atrium is also accessed is by sliding aluminum doors with thin profiles with single-pane fixed transoms above. The second photo here to the right is an additional view of the western facade towards the rear of the property. The property was one of eight residences designed by Aquancy Jones and Frederick Emmons in 1957, located in the Chevy Chase Country Club Highland Track, is one of few that retains a high degree of integrity. Jones was one of the key architects of the mid-20th century design in Southern California, receiving an array of awards, acclaim, and distinctions for his work. The property reflects a key pillar in the designs of Jones: affordability for the growing 20th century middle class, combined with high-style design and functionality. Photos on this slide include 268 West Kenneth Road, which was designated the Weber House, Glendale Register number 136. We also have the Garrett Cooper Residence, the Eichler Track House from 1960, and examples of Jones's works on the California State University Dominguez Hills campus. Though the building has seen some minor alterations over the years, these alterations do not deter from the original design intent of Jones and Emmons, and the residence remains an excellent intact example of a modern-style post-in-beam building in the city. Staff finds the property eligible for listing in the Glendale Register under criterion three. On November 18, the Historic Preservation Commission voted four to zero to recommend designation of the property to City Council. Additionally, the Historic Preservation Commission also voted four to zero to recommend entering into a Mills Act contract with the property owner with the two following conditions: to remove the remnants of a dog-eared gate along the eastern facade and replace with a period-appropriate gate north of the fireplace, and remove the brick paving at the driveway and replace with concrete driveway appropriate to the residence. We should have the property owner with us, Jeffrey Head, to make some comments, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions from council? Good evening, Mr. Head. Any questions? I have a question. Do you have any plans for this home with the Mills Act for, you know, retaining the historic value or renovating the home in any way?
Not renovating, just maintaining.
Maintaining? And what, and how, what are your plans?
Well, we have lots of root damage that's caused.
I'm sorry, we can't hear here in the council chambers.
Can you hear me?
No, barely.
Oh, okay.
Can you speak closer to the microphone?
Sure. Is this, is this any better?
Much better, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
You're getting a real close-up of my face. So, yes, there are plans for doing away with the root damage caused, that's causing the carport and the driveway to buckle.
Okay.
So that's going to be some extensive work, but that's really more preservation than renovation.
Yeah, right.
There's some soft landscaping plans, again, to really highlight the features of the house, the exterior features of the house.
I'm sorry, when, when did you purchase this home?
Just over a year ago.
Oh, okay, so you've, you're really new in the, in the home, so you're just kind of getting to know the home?
Yes, and, and some of the leaks that we had last, last fall are not leaking as of today, so that's good news.
Okay, well, that's, that is good news, because today was a bad one. Councilmembers, any comments?
None.
All right, are we ready to move on this one?
I'm going to close the hearing, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I will close the hearing. And do I have a motion for this?
I'll move, I'll move, what is it, approval of the Mills Act contract?
To designate.
And the designation is on the Glendale Historic Register.
981 and 2?
981 and 2.
No, the number two is to deny the request.
Apologies, apologies, 981, I apologize.
You don't want?
981.
I gotta watch out. Okay, is there a second? Did I hear?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agagianian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Enjoy your home.
Thank you.
Okay, next item?
Next item is 9B Community Development Regarding Proposed Ordinance to Establish South Cumberland Heights Historic District Overlay Zone. B1, Introduction of Ordinance to Establish South Cumberland Heights Historic District Overlay Zone.
Okay, another public hearing, which I will open. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Madam Mayor Devine, Member City Council, we're just going to go to Jay Platt, our principal planner, for the presentation of this item.
Thank you. Tonight, you're considering two separate historic districts that have been on kind of a parallel path for several years now to get to tonight's discussion, which is the second-to-last stage of the designation process, which we'll look at in a second. Before I talk about the individual district, the first item you're considering, 9B, is for the South Cumberland Heights Historic District Overlay Zone. But I just wanted to remind council of where we are today in terms of our historic districts. Since we established these back in 2007, 2008, we have seven historic districts currently designated, identified on the map here, with Cottage Grove down in South Glendale at the foot of Adams Hill, and the other districts pretty much ringing the foothills of the Verdugo Mountains along the south face of the mountain. We have two districts proposed tonight, South Cumberland Heights and Casa Verdugo, which continue that kind of geographic ringing of the Verdugo foothills. And then you'll see in white, which doesn't show up so well here, an 11th district, I'm sorry, a 10th district, which is currently proposed, and that's an area called Bellhurst. So you'll be seeing more of Bellhurst in the next year or so. If you remember, we have a very complicated and very thorough approval process for our historic districts, with this flow chart showing the many different steps, and the blue boxes indicating either public hearings, community meetings, or petition gathering phases that the district proponents go through. Earlier in the year, council directed us to come back with a report to discuss ways to streamline this process, and we expect to have that for you in the first part of 2022. We've been at this for a long time now, and many people think we may not need to go through as many of these steps as possible, that people understand the pros and cons and the issues of districting pretty well at this point. If you note down at the bottom, I have three dates identified. These are the final three steps of the designation process, and this comes after we've received a petition in both of the cases you'll hear tonight, in which residents are requesting that the council designate the historic district. So the Historic Preservation Commission heard this on November 18, followed by the Planning Commission on December 1. And then, of course, we're here at council for the final decision. Tonight, you're voting to introduce the ordinance, and if you do so, we'll return on January 11 for the vote on the final designation. So looking at the first district that we're, that you are considering tonight, South Cumberland Heights, you can see the area identified on the map here. It's north of Kenneth Road and below Cumberland Road, the north and south, grand view to the west, and more or less Highland, little bit of a zigzag, but on the east. The neighborhood consists of 216 homes, and you can see it in the image on the aerial on the right with the boundary outlined. And I include the image on the left just to show, remind everyone of how empty Glendale once was. You can see the Brand Mansion up at the top. You can see the Brand Airport or the Aerodrome on the left. The area that we're looking at isn't quite on this map, but it's very similar to the agricultural land you see on the right, which is actually part of the North Cumberland Heights Historic District, which you designated a few years ago. Speaking of which, we, this district is part of what was once a proposed district that was much larger. Over 500 properties were proposed in 2003, 2004 as the Cumberland Heights Historic District. That process didn't go smoothly as it could have, partly because we didn't have our design guidelines in order, and the ordinance wasn't as clear as it is today in terms of the various steps that proponents go through, that the neighborhood has to go through to understand what it means to be in a historic district. So three, or two parts of this neighborhood have been previously designated. First, the Art Even Highlands Historic District in 2009, which is in blue, and then in 2012, the North Cumberland Heights Historic District. So if you vote to include the South Cumberland Heights District among our designated neighborhoods, we'll be kind of completing the puzzle of what was the Cumberland Heights District. Here's another map showing the individual parcels on the left, and we hire consultants to kind of do the research to let us know if, in an impartial view, the consultant believes that the proposed district meets the various thresholds and various criteria that the city establishes for designation. And part of what they do is they create a great narrative history of the neighborhood, and they give us things like this map, which is broken down each color representing a different decade. And it's a really nice visual to kind of understand how our neighborhoods develop over time, where you see a lot of properties that are orange, meaning they were built in the 20s, and a lot of properties that are yellow from the 30s, and then a scattering of other properties that bring us up into the 40s, 50s. And this is very typical of the development pattern of Glendale, especially these kind of foothill neighborhoods, where there was a great boom in the 20s, lots of interest in building houses here, but not every lot got developed. So then, over time, we have more development in the 30s, which is surprising when you think about the 30s being associated with the Depression. In Glendale, we had a lot of construction during the 30s, and this is consistent among our various historic districts. We haven't done any research to kind of pinpoint why that was happening, but it seems maybe the Los Angeles area just had some businesses like oil and film and aeronautics that allowed people to maintain incomes during this period, and they were still building houses. So moving forward, just to look at some of the property types and styles that you find in this South Cumberland Heights neighborhood, because it was built out largely in the 20s and 30s, we have a lot of what are called period revival houses. These were the predominant styles that were really popular during that time, so we have Spanish colonial revival, Mediterranean revival, Monterey revival. What's interesting in this neighborhood is we have a couple of craftsman houses, or I think three, but at least two of those were moved into the neighborhood, so they weren't built at the time. And this was a time when it was cheap enough to move houses, that a lot of properties just got picked up from one part of town and crossed into another part. Going on with the period revival styles, we have American colonial revival, Tudor revival, and the style that's sometimes French revival or French eclectic. And then, as we move into the 40s and especially into the 50s, we started kind of a change in popular taste and a change in styles. So we have ranch houses, both the traditional-style ranch and the modern-style ranch, and then a number of properties that are built in the minimal traditional style, which was kind of like taking the old period revivals. So you can have a minimal traditional that's kind of Spanish, that's kind of Tudor, that's kind of colonial. And so it's just kind of a variation on those older styles, but kind of a simplification. There are a number of houses in the neighborhood that are already on the Glendale Register. I just give you an example of a few to look at here. And going back to the consultant's report, that's one of the attachments to your staff report, the city has nine criteria for designating historic districts. The code requires that only one criterion be met, but almost all of our districts have met multiple criteria. So in the case of South Cumberland Heights, we meet criterion A because the properties in the neighborhood kind of reflects the city's cultural, social, economic, aesthetic history, and certainly architectural history. We have an identification with some significant people in the city's history, because the Campbell brothers, Dan and Arthur Campbell, owned a lot of the land that was developed in this area, and they were associates of Leslie Brand. So that connection kind of brings them up to a level of importance for the neighborhood. We have houses that embody distinctive characteristics of their time period and their style. We also look at reflections of geographical patterns. So a neighborhood like this was not well-served by the streetcar lines, so this neighborhood had to have been built when more people had cars, and that's borne out by the construction dates for a lot of the houses, which started being built in the mid and especially toward the later 20s, when many, if not most, people had cars at that point. And then, final criterion that it meets is criterion H, which talks about the historic and architectural cohesiveness, and that kind of gets to the heart of what a historic district is. It feels like it hangs together, even though the houses look different, they're different styles, some are one-story, some are two-story, but, but because of their design and the overall setting, there's a sense of cohesiveness. One of the main things that the historic report, the historic survey does, is identify which properties are contributors and which are not called non-contributors. And I'll explain that in a second, but the first thing in, that the survey team needed to do was identify the period of significance for the district, and that's basically the period from the initial subdivision and development up until the time it was more or less built out. So we have, for this neighborhood, a period of significance of 1922 to 1960, which is similar to the periods that we have for several of our other historic districts. To be a contributor, you have to be, the property has to have been built during the period of significance, and it can't be changed too much. It has to retain its historic integrity. So even though it will have some changes in most cases, they're not so significant that when you look at it, you say, what happened to that house? It doesn't really look like a Tudor anymore. It doesn't look like a Spanish anymore. A non-contributor was either built before 1922 in this district's case, or after 1960, and it also, or, and it may have lost its integrity. It may have just been changed. So it could have been built during the period of significance, but it just got kind of altered too much over the years. The reason this is an important distinction between these two types of properties is that the historic district guidelines, which apply to all of the properties in the historic district, have different sections. So there's, most of the guidelines are focused on, on the contributors, and the guidelines are then broken down by style and building parts, porches, roofs, walls, windows. For the non-contributors, it's a little more open-ended, it's a little more, it's not focused on style or historic features, it's just focused on trying to keep the overall look of the house alive and keeping it fitting into the overall appearance of the neighborhood. So in terms of numbers, the Glendale Municipal Code identifies certain thresholds that have to be met. So in, in a historic district, we have to have 60% of the properties be contributors. So in the case of South Cumberland, we have 163 out of the 216 are contributors. That's 75%. And we have 52 houses that are non-contributors, and you can see those in gray on this map, and then one house wasn't able to be evaluated because it can't be seen from the street. There are two petitions that happen where the proponents of the districts kind of circulate among their friends and neighbors and try to say, listen, we're trying to create a historic district here. Are you interested or are you not interested? The first petition phase basically is asking the Historic Preservation Commission to authorize the survey. The more important of the two petitions ultimately is the one that brings us here tonight. That's where over 50% of the properties, so the owners of over 50% of the properties, are requesting that council designate this historic district. And I should say, for both South Cumberland Heights and Casa Verdugo, it's kind of amazing how well the district proponents did during the pandemic to actually figure out ways to reach their neighbors, to, to make sure everyone understood that this process was happening. In addition, all of our public meetings and hearings such as tonight are publicly noticed. So everyone in the district, over the course of several years, has received multiple notices about this process and about their ability to weigh in and express their opinion. So going back to the numbers, in, for South Cumberland Heights, we received petitions within the required deadline that the city establishes, and the owners of 123 properties have requested designation. So that's out of 216, giving us 57% of the owners of the properties represented, and the ordinance requires 50%. We haven't received a petition opposing the district. That doesn't mean there aren't people living and owning property in the district who do oppose it, and we've heard from some of them at previous meetings, but there's been no organized opposition. So based on our overview of So based on our overview of the ordinance, all of the requirements have been met, the criteria have been met, the thresholds have been met. The Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the petitions and looked at the numbers on November 18th. The Planning Commission looked at the historic district overlay change on December 1st. And both, both of the commissions have unanimously recommended that council vote to establish the South Cumberland Heights Historic District. That's my presentation, and I'm here for questions, if you have any.
Excuse me, Ms. Devine.
Thank you, Mr. Platt, for the very, very fine report. Councilmember Adoree Janine.
Did you say the ordinance requires 50% of the, I mean, okay, of the population? Or those who reside there?
It's an interesting thing. It's not the number of people, it's the number of properties. So the ordinance requires 50, the owners of over 50% of the properties to sign. What that means is if you have a couple, for example, owns a property, and one person supports the district and one person doesn't, then that vote won't count. You have to have all of the owners of a property sign the petition in order for that vote to count.
Okay, but why you, on previous page, it says ordinance requires 60%?
That's for the number of contributors. It's two separate numbers, so you have to have 60% of the properties or more be contributors. And that's kind of a standard number for historic districts in other cities around the country. We have, our petition is kind of a different process. It's, I don't know if it's unique to Glendale, but we have a very specific petition process. So that's where you have 50% of the properties have to be represented on the petition. Over 50%, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I do have seven callers on the line.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Unless you take the caller.
Go ahead. I'll take them afterwards.
So Jay, I was around when we first started these historic districts back in 2007, so I'm happy that we did. But occasionally, I do hear complaints by people who have contributors, they're all of a sudden in a historic district, and they have some significant restrictions on what they can do. When they're going around getting the signatures, is it made clear to the people signing that in a historic district, there will be limitations on what you can do to your property?
It should be by the proponents, but I'm not with them. But we also have community meetings where we invite people to come. And this year, we did, one of the community meetings was virtual, and then an earlier one was in-person. And I'm very clear during the meeting that, yes, when you want to change your windows, for example, in a historic district, you're not going to be able to put vinyl windows in, for example. So we do our best to let people know that, but I can't say that every individual's heard it, so.
Didn't we have some standard form? I mean, going door-to-door, oh, here's my neighbor, how you doing, Betty? Would you sign this? We want to create a historic. Oh, sure, get a signature. Let's say they don't attend your meeting, they don't really understand what they're doing, so maybe in that, maybe in that process, we should standardize a language and maybe have an additional handout saying, this is what it means, this is what's protected, this is what your restrictions are. SB 9, we were just talking about SB 9, lot splits now are restricted in historic districts. So maybe we should, we should have something like that. I just want to make sure that everyone who is involved, and you know, these, these numbers weren't overwhelming, but they met the threshold. I just want to make sure that everyone that's signing, that's involved, knows what they're, what's going on, and there's no later surprise, just for the.
The proponents are given what we call the Historic District Handbook, which is something, I don't know that they're handing out copies of it. But we have a Historic District brochure that's going to be mailed to all of the property owners and residents in historic districts. We're just working on the final stage of getting that done. That's taken a while, but hopefully, very early in 2022, that'll go out. That's something that we're planning to print lots of copies of. We're going to distribute that. Where the Historical Society will have copies to hand out at their events, any events that we have will hand them out. And what I picture is that when, for example, the Bellhurst Historic District, which hasn't entered any of the public outreach phase yet, hopefully, the brochure will be ready for them, and we'll just give them stacks of those to hand out as they go along. And that's pretty, trying to put a lot of information in a relatively concise pamphlet, we cover that there are obligations for ownership in a historic district pretty clearly.
Okay, I want to go to the criterion that, criteria that you listed. In particular, criterion A exemplifies or reflects special elements of the city's cultural, social, economic, political, aesthetic. Was this a neighborhood that was redlined with deed restriction?
Well, redlining wasn't deed restrictions exactly.
Redlining is financing issues.
Yeah, so this, this area was not redlined. It was, I can't remember if it was blue or green, but it was one of the not-redlined areas. There were deed restrictions, undoubtedly. This neighborhood was developed a little differently than some of our others. For example, Rossmoyn, big neighborhood, was developed as one neighborhood by the same developer. This neighborhood was more of a patchwork of subdivisions, so we don't have a strong record of what kind of deed restrictions were placed. But given the city's move with the race and ethnicity context that we're preparing, for the RFP that went out for the Bellhurst Historic District, I added a very specific section that we're asking for deep digging on as far as they can get to understand what kinds of racial restrictions, what kind of covenants may have been incorporated into the sales. And we're trying not to hide this, obviously, but when we acknowledge it, we're not usually acknowledging it with as much historical backing as we could, so I'm hopeful that Bellhurst will give us that. And Bellhurst is similar to Rossmoyn. It was developed by one developer one time.
Would that knock it out of your contention if it was a, let's say, a very strictly deed-restricted district?
It wouldn't knock it out of contention as being a historic district. It's part of the historic reality of the neighborhood. If council chose not to memorialize something like that by creating historic districts, that, that would be council's choice. I wouldn't recommend it historically, so.
It's kind of like putting up a statue of Robert E. Lee.
I'm gonna differ a little on that.
It's historic, but there's an undertone to that history, especially when you talk about, one of the criterion, which says it reflects the city's cultural, social, economic, political, history, et cetera. This is just, I'm just thinking out loud. It raises some interesting.
Your point's very clear. We want to make sure that we're acknowledging that history, and like I said, with Bellhurst, getting more information than we have for our previous districts. But it wouldn't necessarily, on a historian's end view, make a neighborhood not eligible for historic designation, so.
Got it. I like the work you did. I like this district, so I'll just say that, so people don't think that I'm taking a deep left turn here. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Nadorn. Take the phone calls now, please, then we'll discuss.
Steve Hunt, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Steve Hunt. I'm president of the Glendale Historical Society. Tonight, I represent and speak for our more than 1,100 members to ask that council members vote for and approve the establishment of the South Cumberland Heights Historic District. Also want to thank the Historic District Committee for their multi-year effort and dedication to bring this district before council tonight. A recent survey showed that Glendale has, as compared to neighboring communities, the most complicated and cumbersome ordinance to create a historic district. This ordinance, as Jay referred to, has 12 steps, which includes two petitions, two planning department reviews, three Historic Preservation Committee reviews, two public meetings, one Planning Commission review, and finally, tonight, a review and approval by council. With the passage of Senate Bill 9 into law, it is more important than ever to create historic districts to help preserve our historic neighborhoods. It is, it truly takes dedicated and patient people to start and complete all of these steps, especially during a pandemic. My thanks, our TGHS thanks, to the South Cumberland Heights Historic District Committee. Once again, TGHS and its members encourage all council members to approve this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Adoree Janine?
We have, one of the proponents is on WebEx. We could go to him before the calls, if possible.
Is that Mr. Cattell?
Yes. Yes, it is. You see me? Hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Devine, council members, and city staff. I'm Derek Cattell, one of the applicants for South Cumberland Heights Historic District. First, I would like to thank Jay Platt and city staff for all the work done to get us here tonight. It's been about four years, so it's been a long process. As Jay alluded to, this journey, though, for many of us, started a very long time ago as a grassroots movement that eventually paved the way for historic districts to even exist in Glendale. Back in the early 2000s, a group of neighbors from the larger Cumberland Heights neighborhood got together and petitioned the then-city council to have city staff develop the historic district guidelines. Tonight, I would also like to acknowledge and remember a key member of our original group, Sally McCaller, who recently passed away. Sally was a wonderful, enthusiastic, and generous soul. I remember countless historic district meeting meetings and events held at her Art Even Historic Landmark home. Sally was the niece of Dan Campbell, one of the pioneers with Leslie Brand, that really developed, as Jay said, the Cumberland Heights area. It's hard to believe that our neighborhood is 100 years old. If South Cumberland Heights is approved tonight, we would be the final puzzle, as Jay said, of the original Cumberland Heights movement that started over 20 years ago. To date, the South Cumberland Heights Committee completed and met all required staff, all required steps and tasks associated with the historic districting process. We are asking and seeking your approval to officially establish South Cumberland Heights as a historic, as Glendale's next historic district. Lastly, I would like to comment briefly on the Senate Bill 9. Historic districts, as stated, are exempt, and it would basically protect our single-family home zoning in our pending district. Thank you for your time again, and I urge all of you to please support and approve the ordinance change to make South Cumberland Heights Historic District an overlay zone. Have a good night and happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I think a little later, we're going to need a, an explanation on that remark about historic districts being exempt. Let's take the next caller, please.
Mark Tereborelli. Mark, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, and good evening to the city council members and Mayor Devine and everyone else listening. I am Mark Tereborelli, and I've lived in Glendale now for 26 years and within the proposed district for 22 years. I'm also one of the signed applicants on the application for the South Cumberland Heights District. And what attracted me to Glendale was the distinctive period homes that we see within the proposed district. To know that about 44% of our homes in the proposed district over the next several years will be 100 years old is really just extraordinary in my mind when I compare the district to what is elsewhere within Los Angeles area. Whenever I have friends visit, they always comment about what a great area we live in and that they never knew Glendale had such classic homes. These homes should be respected for their uniqueness, charm, and how they represent the deep connections to the city of Glendale's distinguished history. I've also been very active in the petition signing phase and was reminded many times as I met my neighbors in the district that they too love the area for the same reasons. While numerous thanks go out to the many people that helped get us this far, I'd like to call out Jay Platt for his guidance over the years through the historic district process. With 57% of the homes signing the petition in favor of the district during the tough times of the COVID pandemic, I ask for your help, support, and approval of forming the eighth historic district in Glendale, South Cumberland Heights. Thank you. Have a good night and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Next caller.
Kathy Nixon, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Kathy.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Kathy Nixon. I live in the proposed historic district. This area has an abundance of character and charm, and I'd love to see this motion approved as the best way to preserve these qualities. The great majority of the residents in the area support the proposed district, and I'm asking for your consideration in approving this ordinance to establish South Cumberland Heights Historic District. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you, Kathy. Next.
Catherine Babbitt. Catherine, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hello, and thank you for hearing us and to Jay Platt and all his hard work, along with everybody else who created even the ability to have a historic district here in Glendale. The first one was Cumberland Heights, but we weren't included in that because it felt, I guess, overwhelmingly huge, and so we pieced it together eventually. Here we are, and I'm asking you for your support to create a historic district for Cumberland, South Cumberland Heights, as this is a very special place. I've lived in Glendale since 1990 from Redondo Beach, and I just love the homes here and the community and everything about it. And so I'm hoping that you will support all the hard work from not only Jay Platt, but everybody in the neighborhood, as it is important for our history, our architecture, and our property value. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You. Next caller.
Ken Klatwetter. Ken, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, thanks. My name's Ken, and my husband and I live at the corner of Hillcrest and Cumberland, and we follow closely the work of the folks behind this initiative. And I just want to say that, you know, we've lived in several historic neighborhoods in Southern California, from South Pasadena to Hollywood Hills to Silver Lake, and we feel so fortunate to have discovered this neighborhood with so much character and charm and lovely historic homes. There's a level of architectural integrity here that has sadly vanished from so many of our towns, and it would be a real shame if the city of Glendale didn't recognize this and do everything in its power to preserve this beautiful neighborhood. So I urge you to vote in favor of the South Cumberland Heights Historical District Overlay Zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
John Schwab Sims. John, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, I'm, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
We can.
Great. Yes, hello, I'm John Schwab Sims, and I'm Vice President of Preservation for the Glendale Historical Society, and also co-applicant for the proposed Bellhurst Historic District. I would like to enthusiastically express support for the approval of both the South Cumberland Heights and Costa Verdugo Historic Districts. Both have met the criteria to be approved and tell critical stories about the history and development of Glendale. Glendale has wonderful character-defining neighborhoods and is a draw for new residents. Approving these two districts will ensure their history and story remains intact to be passed on to future generations. I ask that you support the approval of these two historic districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Malone. George, you have three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, council members. I want, I'm calling in to let you know that last evening, I sent an email to each of you outlining the reasons why both my wife and I support the establishment of the district. We live on Art Even in the proposed district, and indeed, our daughter and her family live on Idlewood Road in the proposed district, so we all enthusiastically recommend the approval of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Robert Nixon, you have three minutes. Robert, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name's Robert Nixon. My wife and I live, have lived in the South Cumberland Heights area for nearly 20 years, and we continue to live here because of the beauty of the streets and the homes and because of the strong sense of community that exists here. These are the qualities that we would like to see preserved, and we believe that establishing a historic district will do just that. A concern was raised earlier in the hearing about the thoroughness of the, the public outreach, and I was one of the canvassers that, that went door-to-door along with several other people, and let me assure the council that, that every effort was, was undertaken to make. and let me assure the council that, that every effort was undertaken to make sure that the residents and the owners in the area fully understand the ramifications of historic district designation. In fact, our visits often involved three, four, even five visits to homes when people would ask questions and, and we would go out and find the answers in return. And it didn't always result in a, in a signed petition form, but I believe in this way the neighborhood was fully informed as to what the real meaning of the historic designation would be. So with that in mind, we, I would request that the council please approve the ordinance establishing the new historic district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Anderson. You have three minutes. Karen, go ahead.
Oh, hi. Thanks for having me. I, I completely support the establishment of this South Cumberland Heights Historic District. We've lived here for now 15, almost 16 years, and I can't tell you. I come home, you know, I drive home from work and I drive up to our street and our neighborhood, and it's just, you know, it's gorgeous and it's beautiful, and the community is so, so awesome, all the way down to Kenneth Village, all the way, all, all over the place. And I, I just love to see it be a historic district, and I just hope you guys all support it and, and thanks for considering it. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that was the last caller for item 9.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, colleagues, we have Mr., I mean, Councilmember Najarian's opinion. Who would like to go next? Would anyone like to just go ahead and move the item? I, I mean, the...
Yeah, I have, I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Just a question on...
Councilmember Brott.
I think I saw the contributor, the percentage of contributors was 75%. Is that, how does that compare with our other districts?
I actually brought a chart.
Great.
Because I don't have it in my head. So, let's see. It, it compares favorably, a little bit lower. Larger districts tend to be a little lower. So going to the top contributor percentage, we have 93%, which is Cottage Grove. That's only 14 houses. Royal Boulevard was 73%, so a little less than this district. Art Even Highlands was 78%, a little higher. Rossmoyn was 82%, so a bit higher there. North Cumberland Heights again...
But how many, how many houses?
In Rossmoyn, there are 504 houses. So Rossmoyn has a remarkable level of intact older houses. North Cumberland Heights was the same as Art Even Highlands, so the same neighborhood was 78%, so this being 75 is kind of in, in that ballpark. Brockmont Park, smaller neighborhood again with only 59 properties, had 88%. And Neodraw Drive has 78% with 32 properties. So it's right in there, I'd say, a little, a little lower.
Okay. That was just idle curiosity, but I'm, I'm supportive of this. I, I know that by the time these historic districts come to us, you know, we're just sitting here and taking a vote, but a lot of work goes into this. We, we make the communities really run the gauntlet, and, and so I, you know, hats off to the folks that have been at this for, for, you know, many, many years and have not given up. I, I live in a historic district, Neodraw, and although I, I did very little work to make it happen, I, I at least was corralled to, to participate in the meetings at the Planning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, and at council, so, and I think actually that was probably my, my first visits to any of these bodies was, was through that. So that was my introduction to, to city government in Glendale, only uphill from there. So, yeah, I, I fully support this and want to just thank the folks that have worked so hard to make this happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Kusakian?
Thank you. I'll just be brief. I think a lot has been already said about it, and I know how hard the neighbors have worked to bring this to its final approval here before council. Certainly, the area has significance historically, and I believe that the more of these neighborhoods that we can preserve, the better off our city will be. So I, I support this and I more support the next one that we'll be hearing, but I know I'm getting ahead of myself, so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Maga Najmian?
No comment.
Okay. Then I'm the final one, and I cannot disagree with my colleagues. I think it's time that we should complete this puzzle. I, I know that not only is there a lot of work that goes into something like this, getting a historic district established, but the time, years, years. And so I, it, it's a beautiful, extraordinary area in our city, and I totally agree with the gentleman they called, I think it was George, that said that when he has friends come over and visit Glendale and they, we, you know, drive through Glendale and we see these beautiful neighborhoods, and they're, they're just amazed that Glendale has these fabulous homes and neighborhoods, and I have experienced exactly the same thing. So with that, I am also absolutely in favor of approving this or introducing this. So all we need is an introduction. I'll close the public hearing, and do we have an introduction to the ordinance?
I would love to have the honor to introduce this ordinance.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll leave the honor for the next one to, to one of my colleagues.
Okay. Thank you, and the ordinance has been introduced. And the hearing, I close the hearing. Okay. So, next item?
Next item is 9C, Community Development Regarding Proposed Ordinance to Establish Casa Verdugo Historic District Overlay Zone. One, Introduction of Ordinance to Establish Casa Verdugo Historic District Overlay Zone.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing on this one. Mr. Giallani?
Yes, Mayor Divine, members of the city council. This item also brought to you by none other than Jay Platt, Principal Planner. Go ahead, Jay.
Thank you. This one will go a little more quickly if we get the slides going. And it, it's very gratifying personally to hear people thank me for helping in this process, but as Mr. Brotman and other council members acknowledged, there's so much work that goes into this from the community. It's a truly grassroots effort more than many of the things that we see in Glendale. So I just kind of wanted to reiterate how important that public component is. And as we move forward with the concept of streamlining, I think it will be very important to maintain that, and I hope council agrees, because I think that's, that's what establishes that these neighborhoods are very interested in, in protecting their heritage and protecting the feel of what makes them special. We're now looking at the proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District Overlay Zone. This is just to the east of Brand Boulevard and just to the south of Mountain Street. And as opposed to South Cumberland Heights, which had this patchwork development history with some connections to, to the Campbell brothers, but, but nothing in terms of someone just kind of having a, being a figurehead for the neighborhood, the Casa Verdugo neighborhood has, has a very interesting historical background. It's an earlier neighborhood than South Cumberland Heights, and you can see that in the map on the right. It was also developed over the course of many years as a number of tracts, so there's no one developer associated with it, but there's kind of a historic through line that really makes this neighborhood more kind of different than some of our others. In this map on the right, where we look at the construction dates, you can see that there's a smattering of red that's 1906 to 1909. So some very early properties from the very first years of the city of Glendale were built in this neighborhood, and then we see a lot of these orange properties, which are the 1910s, and then also a lot of the yellow properties where we start looking at the period revival houses of the 1920s. And then in this neighborhood, a fair number of the green properties reflecting the Depression-era construction that's also typically in the period revival styles. So we'll look at those in a second, but going back to the historical underpinnings of Casa Verdugo, this is an area that was a suburb of Glendale, and it had its, it had the name Casa Verdugo from, from its very inception. It even had its own post office called Casa Verdugo at the beginning. And it's really a neighborhood that we have today because of the woman you see on the left, who was named Pia de Diorbasol. She was the proprietress of the Casa Verdugo Restaurant. And it's hard to imagine what it was like in those days, but if you look at the picture on the top in the center, that's the old Sepulveda Adobe, which was bought by Henry Huntington and the Pacific Red Car Line that ultimately became, Leslie Brand became associated with. And there was an extension of the red car that took people from Glendale to Los Angeles, and the extension took them up Brand Boulevard and then all the way up to Casa Verdugo. And the Adobe was at the very end of the line, and so Pia de Sol started her restaurant serving what they called Spanish food, but we would call today Mexican food, in the Adobe. And it was an amazingly picturesque setting, and it was incredibly successful. It's really one of, if not Glendale's first tourist attraction. So it wasn't just a place people in Glendale wanted to go, it was a place people came from all over to go, because it was very much an old California-feeling place, and then the food and the costumes of the waiters and waitresses kind of spurred the development of the neighborhood ultimately, along with the presence of the streetcar. So where South Cumberland Heights was very much a car-oriented neighborhood, this neighborhood started out before anyone had cars, but you could still get to downtown Glendale, you could still get to downtown Los Angeles just by riding the train. You see a little bit in the map, on the right, the, the streetcar line ending at Casa Verdugo. And then in the bottom map, there was a neighborhood called Casa Verdugo Villa Tract to the west of Brand Boulevard, but you can sort of see, it's not super clear, and I don't know, I'm not sure if I have a mouse here, but on the right of Brand Boulevard, you can see the Sepulveda Adobe. So that was the first location of Casa Verdugo, but Pia de Sol had a falling out with Henry Huntington's company, and she moved her restaurant. She took the name and she bought a house that was built a couple of blocks away from Brand Boulevard on Louise, and she started her restaurant in this house, which appropriately was a Mission Revival-style house, so a style we don't really see a lot of in Glendale, and this is a super great example of it. So you see an older picture on the left, you see a picture from the restaurant days where it says "The Original Spanish Restaurant." And then amazingly, on the bottom, you see the house today. So it still stands, it's listed on the Glendale Register, and ultimately, this business lent its name to the entire neighborhood. So that's why we're proposing, and it should be called Casa Verdugo Historic District. So because this has a different developmental history than the neighborhood you just looked at, we have some really early construction. So we have a neoclassical-style house, which is incredibly rare, it's so rare in Glendale that we had to have the historic consultant who did the report prepare a section for our historic district guidelines for the neoclassical style, because we didn't have it in there, even though I don't know that we're going to find another house or two even in this style, but it's part of our process to make sure that we capture every type and style of house in the guidelines. So that house is from 1906. We have the Casa Verdugo House that we just mentioned, and then we have a bunch of craftsmen houses in this neighborhood, and that's probably what makes this area most distinct. We have large craftsmen houses representing, you know, a range of the periods, I only included these here, but representing a range of the craftsman type. And as you know, we don't have a lot of density of craftsmen. We still have a lot scattered around town, but we don't have any neighborhoods besides this one that have kind of a, a good number of craftsmen. Then, starting in the 20s, the mid-20s especially, we start getting the period revivals, which again are similar to the other period revival houses we see. So we have American Colonial Tudor Revival, Spanish Colonial Revival, the French, the Mediterranean Revival, and the Minimal Traditional are all represented in the proposed district. I hear a few more of the craftsmen. I knew I had something. A bunch of properties in, in this neighborhood are already listed on the Glendale Register, including the three craftsmen houses at the left and the top center. And again, going to the consultant's report, they analyzed the proposed district under the nine criteria, and they found that it met the same five criteria. The main difference here is the fact that for criterion B, the identification is with Pia de Diorbasol because of Casa Verdugo, and then the other one would be criterion G, where this is really a streetcar suburb, which is different than a lot of our other neighborhoods. So, so even within these criteria, different neighborhoods will have different ways of fitting the, the points that are being hit in these. The period of significance for this neighborhood starts earlier and ends close to where South Cumberland Heights did, so we go from 1906 to 1957. Again, that range is very typical of Glendale's neighborhoods. You can see on the left, the green properties are contributors, the grays are non-contributors. There are 112 houses in this neighborhood, I should have mentioned, and 76 of those are contributors. That means 68% contribute to the character and the feel of the district, and our ordinance requires 60% to be contributors. So that leaves 37 houses as non-contributors, and again, we have one house that's kind of away from the street, so it wasn't evaluated. This neighborhood did a tremendous job, South Cumberland Heights did as well. Casa Verdugo, and I'm sure you'll hear from speakers tonight, the neighborhood really came together through this process in a way that some of our other historic district neighborhoods didn't in terms of block parties, national night-out gatherings. So I think the community really took to heart what was happening through the historic district process. The petition was submitted to us with the signatures of owners of 86 of the 112 properties. That's 77%, where the ordinance requires 50%, so we're well above the threshold for owners signing the petition. Again, there were no opposition petitions, though of course, and I should mention that in historic districts, the number of signatures doesn't mean that if we have 77% supporting, that means we have 23% opposing. It just means that those people didn't sign, and there could be various reasons. They couldn't be reached, perhaps. They may very actively oppose designation, so it could be a range of reasons why people don't sign the petition. Staff has reviewed all of the submittals and petitions, and we believe that all of the requirements have been met. We took this to Historic Preservation and Planning Commission, just as we did South Cumberland, and in the same way, both commissions voted to recommend that council designate the historic district. That's what I've got for you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Platt, for that, another very good report. Can I, let's do council comments and then maybe the, how many callers do we have, Mr. Najmian?
Madam Mayor, at this time, I have 11 callers.
We also have three proponents on WebEx, I saw.
Okay. I was going to say that maybe if they hear council comments, they, they won't feel, feel obligated to, to speak. So let, let, if council's okay with that, if my colleagues are okay, let's go ahead and discuss, and then, yes.
Madam Mayor.
The callers still feel like they want, yes?
Madam Mayor, sorry. So, you know, before you have a discussion, substantive discussion, you need to hear from the public. So my suggestion is if you want to have, have council members ask questions, they can do that, and then hear from the proponents, and then the speakers, and then, and then have the discussion.
Okay. All righty then. Any questions from council?
Yes.
Oh, Councilmember Najarian.
How soon can we implement this historic district, Mr. Platt?
I know. That's what I'm saying. Hang on, buddy, because we're going to, it's, you're good.
If you, if you vote to introduce, are you going to answer? If you vote to introduce, we'll be back on January 11th, and then I'll have to count, but the actual district designation becomes official 30 days later, so February 10th or so.
Thank you, Mr. Platt.
Okay. So maybe if the callers can keep their comments succinct and, and brief, and we can get through this. So shall we take the ones on WebEx first? Let's do that, since they've been waiting. Robin and Laurel?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Madam Divine and council members, thank you. I'm Robin Fai, and I'm one of the applicants of the Casa Verdugo Historic District. The Casa Verdugo Historic District Committee is comprised of 18 dedicated neighbors who have been working on this effort for five very long years, and we'd like to thank each of you for coming to our National Night Out event in August. I stood with most of you at the intersection of Louise and Randolph and pointed out the significance of where you were standing. Those houses on each corner, one built in 1905, one in 1907, another in 1908, and the last in 1925, reflect the architectural history of not only Casa Verdugo, but of Glendale itself. And two of those four homes are on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources, one of them being, of course, the iconic Casa Verdugo, for which our area was named. one of them being, of course, the iconic Casa Verdugo, for which our area was named. You saw that evening the strong sense of community that neighbors of Casa Verdugo have. We were excited and proud to show you our neighborhood, one that people tell me they drive their out of town guests through when they're visiting, but always with the comment, oh, I never knew it had a name. Well, indeed it does. It was initially a community separate from Glendale with its own post office, its own school, and its own identity. But in the mid 1920s, it became part of Glendale, where we're all perfectly happy to be today. Our committee members worked hard to gather signatures of support from a whopping 77% of Casa Verdugo homeowners. That's the second highest percentage of any other historic district in Glendale. And we did it during the pandemic and partially during lockdown. That's how supportive our neighbors are of this effort in Casa Verdugo. And we are also quick to point out that Casa Verdugo has the highest concentration of craftsmen homes, a style which once dominated this area, but most of which are now largely gone or unrecognizable. The Casa Verdugo Historic District Committee and the overwhelming majority of homeowners fervently hope you agree that Casa Verdugo is worthy of preservation and will vote to move us to the final step in this agonizingly long process. Thank you very much and happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you. Shall we go to Laurel?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Devine. And thank you all for listening to our interest and our love for our neighborhood tonight. There's not much more I can say to add to Robin's presentation. She's very complete and thoughtful, as was Jay in his presentation. It's a thrill to get it this far. It'll be a thrill after five years of working on this if you all approve and support this. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. And who, do we have someone else on WebEx?
Yeah, Mayor Devine, it's Sean Bursell.
Hi, Sean. How are you?
I'm, I'm wonderful, Mayor Devine. It's great to see you all again.
Great to see you and, and my best to Heather, but go ahead.
Thank you.
This is your passion.
It is indeed. So good evening, Mayor Devine and members of council. My name is Sean Bursell and I'm one of the applicants for the Casa Verdugo Historic District and obviously speaking in support. I was resident of Casa Verdugo for 23 years until I moved to Pittsburgh in, in 2019. I was going to emphasize the rich history of the proposed historic district, but Mr. Platt did such a, such a great job with that. And you also have the report from ARG, which was, was excellent report. I don't think I can really add to anything about that. I mean, you know, this historic district really highlights the development of streetcar suburbs in the early 20th century and how Glendale's battles over annexation spurred the growth of the city by extending into adjacent areas. And as Mr. Platt noted, how the Casa Verdugo restaurant was Glendale's first tourist attraction. You know, it was said at the time that the visitors to Los Angeles had to see the missions, the, the Mount Lowe Railway, Santa Catalina Island, and the famous Casa Verdugo. So we hope that people in the future will, will come back and, and see Casa Verdugo. I also just want to note that, you know, Casa Verdugo is one of four areas that came together over time to form Glendale. The really, the sort of the key areas. The others, of course, were the town of Glendale, Tropico, and Montrose. And, and to, and to Ms. Councilmember Najarian's comment, which, which I took to heart earlier, Casa Verdugo was a thriving, diverse community of people from all over the country came to live there, people of, of different ethnicities, different races, different religions. And we're actually very proud of the fact that, for instance, the first Armenian family that has been identified as residing in, in Glendale, settled in the greater Casa Verdugo area in 1909 or 1910 on Valley View Road, 1312 Valley View, the Compeyans. And, and all these people came together to, to, to form this community. And we're part of that, that nexus of people who helped create the Glendale that we have today. And so we're very proud of Casa Verdugo and its history. And, and so the point I want to leave you with is that Casa Verdugo is more than a collection of architecturally significant houses, and they are some wonderful houses, but it's also an important part of the story of Glendale and how the city developed over the first half of the 20th century. And for that alone, I would suggest it's worth designating as a historic district. So thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council, and, and best wishes to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Let's go to the phones.
Mike Bain, you have three minutes. Mike, go ahead.
Hi, this is Mike Bain. And I would like to make my support for this approval. And we moved here 25 years ago and love every minute of it. Walking around the neighborhood and recognizing the effort that people have put into maintaining and in some cases restoring these 100-year-old homes is no easy task. And I strongly support making this into a historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Nancy Michael, you have three minutes. Nancy, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor Devine, City Council and City Staff. I live in a 110-year-old craftsmen house in Casa Verdugo. And we are so excited to become hopefully a historic overlay. We all know how fragile history is and how truly fragile historical architecture is. And we actually really support this and we ask you to recommend us for a historic overlay. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Bye, Nancy. Thank you.
Elizabeth Chapel. Elizabeth, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, council and Mr. Platt. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My husband and I would like you to vote to preserve these many early historic assets for Glendale, as well as respect and protect our investment in this small but very unique neighborhood. It would be, we would be very grateful for a positive vote as this neighborhood is a gem and does Glendale great honor. We're in the midst of it and we love it. We chose it for the historic aspects and architecture. And we sincerely hope that you will give us a positive vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Steve Hunt, you have three minutes. Steve, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mayor Devine, council members. I won't repeat everything I said for the South Cumberland Heights, but I do encourage all of the council members to support this Casa Verdugo Historic District proposal. And once again, want to take time to thank both Robin, Sean, and the entire committee of Casa Verdugo for all the time they put in and dedication. And it was fun. I attended some of their gatherings. They were fun and they have truly created a neighborhood group that enjoys and knows each other. So I encourage you all to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Hartwell, you have three minutes. Lori, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lori Hartwell and I live at 1311 North Maryland Avenue. And I just want to ask you to support Casa Verdugo Historic District. When people come to this neighborhood, all of our neighbors, we love our neighborhood. We love the history of it. We love the look of it. And I just ask that you support this.
Thank you, Lori. Next.
Felix Fay, you have three minutes. Felix, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Felix Fay and I'm calling to support the Casa Verdugo Historic District. I have lived in Casa Verdugo my entire life and hope to see the beautiful trees and historic buildings with their unique architecture preserved. And so I hope you vote for the historic district. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Kazluskas. John, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm John Kazluskas and I promise I will keep my comments brief. I also just wanted to call in and express my sincere hope that you all vote in favor of the Casa Verdugo Historic District. I truly, truly believe that establishing the historic district is the best way we can preserve the unique character, history, and architecture of our treasured neighborhood. So just wanted to call in, offer my support. Thanks.
Wallace Family, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hello, Mayor Devine and council members. On behalf of the Wallace family, my name is Emily and I have lived in the proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District my entire life. During the past few years, my family and I have really enjoyed meeting new neighbors as we went door to door to advance the district. I've learned about the process of designation and the importance of preserving our neighborhood. As a young person who works in Glendale and attends Glendale Community College, I look forward to maintaining our community for future generations. Thank you for your time and support of the Casa Verdugo Historic District.
Thank you. Next.
Matt Long, you have three minutes. Matt, go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Matt Long. I live in the proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District and I'm calling to ask you to please support it. We have a beautiful, unique, as Jay and Robin and Sean just explained, and very intact neighborhood with overwhelming support from residents and it deserves to be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorna Vartanian. Lorna, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Mayor Devine, members of council and staff, my name is Lorna Vartanian and I am president of the Rossmoyn Mountain HOA. On behalf of our Board of Directors and our membership, we are thrilled to see this nomination come before you today and we are thrilled to count Casa Verdugo as part of our broader Rossmoyn neighborhood. As you've heard, it's been a long and winding road, but the proponents have done a tremendous job reaching out to their neighbors during the pandemic. And the support they've received confirms the neighborhood's will to see this designation in place. I want to particularly thank Robin Fai, who also chairs the Preservation Committee for the Rossmoyn Mountain HOA, on her leadership on this project, along with Sean Bursell and all the block captains and others who provided guidance and assistance along the way. And it's so important that we protect this very important piece of Glendale's history. And I think as was noted, there is great support on council for this, but we urge the council to vote in favor of the district and thank you so much.
Thank you, Lorna. Next.
Jessica George, you have three minutes. Jessica, go ahead.
Mayor Devine, council members and staff members, this is Grant and Jessica George. We are the lucky and grateful inhabitants of the recently accepted Tatum House, which is the 1908 craftsmen on Maryland and Randolph. We're asking that you support this vote for the Casa Verdugo Historic District. It is critical that we maintain and protect the integrity of our beautiful homes and our community. Thank you so much and happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you. Same to you. Next.
Paul Sigmund Lowry. Paul, you have three minutes. Paula, you have three minutes.
This is Paula Sigmund Lowry and I'm a 30-year homeowner in a 111-year-old home in the prospective Casa Verdugo Historic District. And I urge you to vote to establish this district. You've already heard about how exceptional our collection of homes is, ranging over 50 years of classic architecture design in just a few short blocks. The prospect of preserving our neighborhood as a historic district has brought us together, not only as neighbors, but as a community, working together to preserve the character and charm of our environment. Thank you. I hope you will support the continued growth and development of Casa Verdugo as a historic record of early Glendale.
Thank you, Paul. Next. Madam Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, great. Thanks to all the callers and those of you that are on WebEx. Thank you very much for, for your comments and, and also the hard work that you did. Robin, obviously, went above and beyond, so congratulations on this one. Okay, council, my colleagues. Councilmember Kusakian.
Sure. Thank you very much. I'll go first and I'll be, I'll try to be brief. Again, I support this. Great neighborhood, lot of cool houses, a lot of great craftsmen homes. Having lived in Glendale for over 35 years, just every time I drive through that neighborhood, I find something else that catches my eye and I admire. But for no other reason than it's already been stated, the Casa Verdugo restaurant having been a destination and also being the home of the creator of the character Zorro, one of my favorite characters, literary characters, who by the way, for people don't realize it, later on went on to influence the creation of Batman. Batman is essentially Zorro in modern times. No doubt influenced by the Spanish heritage of the area. And, and also, by the way, Sean, you may appreciate this, The Mark of Zorro, the 1940 film that McCallum wrote, was directed by Ruben Mamullian, an Armenian Hollywood illuminarian pioneer in colored filmmaking and filmmaking in general. For all these reasons and more, I'm more than happy to support the creation of this very worthy and deserving historical district. Thank you, Mayor.
Arnie, was that with Errol Flynn as Zorro? Who is Zorro?
I don't believe, I don't know if Errol Flynn was in that. But since I am at home and on my computer, I can.
Check it out. Okay, all righty. Okay. Thank you for that information. It was interesting.
Tyrone Power was Zorro.
Oh, that's who it was, Tyrone Power. Okay. Next, who would like to go next?
Well, I'll, I'll go. I'm, I'm not going to repeat what I said when we discussed the South Cumberland Heights district, but I, I fully support what we're doing here. My hats off to the, the neighbors, Robin and Laurel. I see the smiles on your faces are infectious. And so I know you've put a lot of work into this and it's well deserved. And earlier I mentioned all the work that the neighbors did in South Cumberland Heights and I forgot to mention and thank Jay and the staff here because I know that it's not just their work, it's, it's a lot of work on your part. So just a shout out there. But yeah, this is wonderful. It's a great neighborhood. I've been in Laurel's house and I think I might have been in Elizabeth's house, which is the, what do we call that? The wedding cake?
Neoclassical wedding.
Wedding cake, yeah, yeah. And they're both beautiful. So congratulations. This is really great.
Councilmember Robbajanian?
I will wait for the vote.
Okay. Have we heard from Councilmember Najarian on this one?
No, you know where I'm going.
Okay. Okay, I, all right, then do you want to speak or we know where you're going?
No.
Okay, all right. I just want to make one comment, well, a couple of comments. First of all, thanks to all of you, Robin, Sean, Laurel, the whole, whole committee that worked on this. I mean, it was years and we have been trying to move this forward. I know when I was first elected, that was the first, first request that I received was please move this forward. And then, of course, Steve Hunt became president. Please can we move this forward? So it's, it's very gratifying to me as well as to all of you because I'm smiling too, that this is finally coming to fruition. I want to say that one reason that I'm happy that we're about to do this is because driving through that area, a lot of homes are being changed. And that worries me and it upsets me. And, you know, there goes the preservation aspect. There goes the, the historic aspect. And, and I hate to see that. And so I'm so happy that we're, we're doing this tonight. So I'm, I'm all for this and I think we're ready to introduce this ordinance for all of you to establish this Casa Verdugo Historic District Overlay Zone. Do I have a motion or do I have someone to introduce?
Well, I was going to let somebody else do it.
I'm happy to. I'm happy to.
Thank you. So the ordinance has been introduced. Congratulations. Congratulations. Very happy. I have a follow-up question on the streamlining of the process for historic districts, if I may at this time. Are we working on that, Mr. Platt?
In my head, we're working on it. It's not on paper yet. I have several ideas of some of the steps that we might be able to consolidate or, or streamline basically.
Do we need to agendize that to, you know, get it in writing, that we, we do that?
Well, the, the plan is to bring you a report in the first quarter, I, I think is safe to say. And that report, as I envision it now, is going to be a series of recommendations. a series of recommendations with pros and cons, allowing the the council to kind of tell us which parts of this you think are appropriate and which may not be appropriate. Um, and then we'll, and then we'll have a staff recommendation going through that list of ideas, and and you can tailor it as as you see fit.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Platt, and thank you and staff for all the work that you've done on all of these, uh, the last three hearings. Um, I, I, we we all thank you. Good job. Thank you. Okay. What's next?
Next item is uh, number 10, Reports and Information, City of Glendale Sustainability Review 2020-2021.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Member City Council, as we close the year, uh, I thought it may be a good idea to end the last meeting, this council meeting uh, of the year on a positive note, and as such, share an impressive list of accomplishments of the Sustainability Office in collaboration with the all the other city departments who have helped in the process, as well as applaud you, City Council, for your vision and the big high priority of environmental stewardship. With that, I'll turn it over to David Jones, our Sustainability Officer, for the report.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, Mayor Divine and City Council members. Um, tonight I'm reporting to council, um, a flavor of efforts being made across the organization to promote and advance sustainability. Although I'll be providing some facts and figures tonight, I will not be undertaking a laundry list of achievements. Rather, I want to provide City Council a picture of what has been done. I also want to take the opportunity to highlight some of the everyday activities staff take to make Glendale a more sustainable city. We also look ahead at some 2022 goals and answer any questions council may have. We acknowledge that there's a tremendous amount of work to do in the years ahead to become a more sustainable city, but we're excited and challenged to be on this journey. We would not be here without City Council leadership and the desire of City Council to proclaim environmental stewardship as one of its, one of its four core council priorities. Over the last 14 months or so, City has, City Council has demonstrated this leadership in a number of ways, including, but not limited to, adopting Ordinance 5954 to create a Sustainability Commission, the first new commission created in a number of years, committing to the city's Race to Zero program to implement inclusive and resilient climate action projects, providing funding for the 2021 budget for the city to hire a consultant to assist in the city preparing a climate action and adaptation plan, and in general, providing staff with a challenge to address environmental stewardship issues. I just briefly want to touch on the Sustainability Commission. As mentioned, this is the first commission, um, new commission adopted by council in a number of years. Um, the first meeting was on March 11th of this year, and the commission has had eight meetings since then. Um, two of those meetings have been in conjunction with the Glendale Water and Power Commission, too, to um, address issues regarding the Shoal Canyon Biogas Project and the Grayson Project, Grayson Repowering Project. Um, the commission has selected two student ex officio commissioners, and then these students bring a new and different perspective to the commission every time we meet, so we're very grateful to have them on board. Um, the commission has worked a lot and provided a lot of recommendations to staff. The commission has a huge amount of knowledge and past experiences on them regarding to climate action plans, the use of single-use plastics, environmental purchasing, and they bring that knowledge and give that knowledge to staff so we can prepare better reports going forward. The commission is very much interested in creating a nice Earth Day opportunity for April 2022, and we're working with them so they can do that. As I mentioned, this has been a new commission, and it's been imperative to provide them with information so they can fulfill their duties. And I'm very grateful to the head, to the department directors who've come in front of the commission to provide information about their departments, how their departments are undertaking sustainability initiatives and being there to answer questions of the commissioners. So I'm going to review um, some key accomplishments, and as I said, these are just a few key accomplishments of the last year. And I'm going to do it in these three areas, some regarding emissions reductions, accomplishments protecting our environment, some pollution prevention accomplishments, and finally equity. Um, just as a little bit background, um, the city of Glendale's done three greenhouse gas inventories. And as you can see, every inventory that's been completed, emissions from the city have reduced. This is not just the city itself, but the entirety of Glendale. Um, our next greenhouse gas emissions inventory should take data from 2020, from 2020. Um, I put this slide up here just to let you know that we are doing, the city is undertaking programs to reduce emissions, which I'm going to describe a few now. Um, on the 12th 13th, um, the Glendale City Council approved multiple energy efficiency and demand response programs for Glendale Water and Power. Lime Energy is one of those programs that has a $17 million budget to enhance energy efficiency programs targeting our business customers. Also within that program, um, they approved a demand response program for residential and commercial customers. Residential and commercial customers participating in that program receive benefits for doing so. And Glendale Water and Power has budgeted 4.3 million for energy efficient programs over the next two years. And finally, GWP's energy efficient, energy efficiency targets for the next 10 years are the highest in the state for public-owned utilities. We're also very excited about community services and parks being certified in American Green Zone Alliance. This means that we're moving away from gasoline-operated landscaping equipment to battery-operated landscaping equipment. This was a pilot project and has now been extended, expanded across all sites utilizing that type of equipment. Public Works continues to green the city's fleet. Currently have 32 electric vehicles, 78 compressed natural gas vehicles, and 68 hybrid vehicles. For context, an electric vehicle produces around about 2,000 pounds of CO2, pounds of CO2 emissions equivalent annually. A gas vehicle, the equivalent gas vehicle produces about 11,000 pounds CO2 equivalent annually. So that fleet of 32 hybrid vehicles um, equals an annual avoidance of around about 300,000 pounds of greenhouse gas emissions annually, or in other words, 134 metric tons. Community and Services and Parks is also embarking on an electric cart replacement program. In 2020, we had one of our sustainability interns begin the food recovery program. That food recovery program recovered over 100,000 pounds of food and avoided roughly 91,000 pounds of greenhouse gas emissions in that year. Recently, um, the City Council approved a work plan for 2022-2023, and we're excited that the City Council has addressed a number of actions in that work plan that will continue to address um, reducing greenhouse gas emissions within the city. Another key area of work has been that of protecting our natural environment. Public Works has an aggressive and well-formed composting education program. We're excited to say that over the last year, 130 bins have been provided to the community. As mentioned earlier today, Mr. Emrani, and by Mr. Emrani, and Public Works has been doing a lot of preparation to get together the infrastructure and education regarding SB 1383. Public Works has also installed um, three drywells throughout the city, and I guess they really took their um, work today. Um, these drywells can capture approximately 5,000 cubic feet of stormwater with a one-inch rain event, and these um, drywells do help recharge groundwater systems. I put the Verdugo Wash Study in here, because I think it's very important that the work that community development and planning has done is to include sustainability programs and concepts earlier on in that study, so the city will benefit from those programs later on. Public Works is an extensive electronic waste recycling program. Um, from 2020 to 2021, um, Public Works recycled 218 tons of electronic waste. Glendale Fire Department, through their fire prevention program, um, in their environmental management center, has a great program to collect and correctly process household hazardous waste. Over the last year, around about 198,000 pounds, or 90 metric tons of household hazardous waste have been processed through this center. Um, this means that that waste didn't go into trash cans, wasn't dumped illegally, but was processed in a correct manner to protect our environment as much as we could. And Glendale Water and Power, um, recycled water, over 20% of the city's water demand is cycled by local recycled water. I also want to do a shout out to Community Services and Parks, especially um, the talks and the education programs they put on. Um, recently, I went to their big felines of the foothills program, and these programs are amazing, because they remind our residents and connect our residents back to the nature that surrounds us. And they really engage the residents to be part of our sustainability discussion and dialogue going forward. Again, these are some of the 2022, 23 plans um, that the council adopted in their work plan regarding protecting the national environment, our natural environment going forward. Um, we've adopted or implemented a number of pollution prevention programs, most notably mylar balloons and also single-use plastics, um, that are single-use plastics for city events, but also disposable, um, disposable single-use plastics on request only program. Um, the single-use plastics program for city-sponsored and city events, um, took a little while to get going, but we know it's working now, and we've been working with um, Glendale Water and Power Warehouse System um, to ensure that the city has purchased um, all the the marine-degradable um, products, so that staff now don't have to go out to different vendors looking for the products. We have sourced all those products internally, so when staff have an event, they can just go through a warehouse system to obtain those, those foodware products. Public Works has the Green Business Program. 35 businesses have been certified through that program. And as you know, that means those businesses in that program get education on water efficiency, energy efficiency, recycling, and waste processing. So by doing that, become much more environmentally efficient programs. And finally, we have a zero-waste office recycling program where we've worked with Public Works to remove bins. Um, this is a pilot program set up in our management services to remove everybody's bin, replace them with a mini bin, and then everybody has to take their trash to a central, or their materials to a central recycling location. Um, this program has been successful. There's been a few complaints, but it has been successful, and we're looking to expand, um, expand that program um, across the city. Um, so in 2022, 23 goals regarding pollution prevention, we focus around environmental preferable purchasing, um, expanding the regulation of single-use plastics for food providers across the city, and for Public Works, conducting public outreach regarding SB 1383. Um, in terms of equity, um, Glendale Water and Power has a vast amount of of programs um, that allow um, everybody to be able to be participate and purchase and, sorry, be able to pay their their bills. Um, $40 million in low-income program being supported through June 2021, and $7.3 million is budgeted over the next two years. As Mr. Emrani mentioned, the food recovery program is now going to be taken over by Public Works, and that means a lot more food will be recovered and provided to those food insecure individuals. So that'll be a great program going forward. As the city manager mentioned, the Sustainability Office has been established over the last year. Um, we have supported the Sustainability Commission in their work. Um, we've established an internal sustainability working group. Um, that group um, shares information among the different departments within the city, within the different organizations within the city, sorry. Um, and that group is going to become critical moving forward as we implement or begin to implement the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. They're going to have a huge role to play in that process. Um, as I mentioned, we established the Sustainability Office, where we've been doing a lot of assessment, writing research and reports, and started doing some program planning for the future. Um, one thing we're really proud about is our community outreach programs, and I have to thank our sustainability interns for all the work they do on these programs. Um, without them, these wouldn't exist, and they've done some fantastic work. And we now have a monthly newsletter. Um, the last one was No Waste November, so we do these newsletters and focus them around what goes on that month, so it's all about a sustainable Thanksgiving. Um, we have officially adopted Sammy the Sustainable Turtle. Um, we're going to use Sammy in developing our education programs for the schools um, within Glendale, so we feel that he will really engage um, that population and those students. We're very, um, as we do these public and community outreach programs, we're very concerned that we're not just pushing information out um, to the community, but we want the community to participate in those programs. Um, so for example, we had this, sign the Plastic-Free Pledge. So over a period of 10 days, um, we pushed out different things the community could do every day to reduce the amount of plastic they used in their daily lives. And then we asked them to sign a pledge at the end of that program that they would continue to do that. So it was like asking residents to do something, then they pledged back to us that they would do it. So we found that very successful. We also did a greenhouse gas or carbon footprint, and this program's called 10 Things You Can Do to Reduce Your Greenhouse Gas Emissions by 10%. So it was 10 little easy steps, actions, individuals could take to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. And again, we've got a lot of feedback on that, and a lot of people suggesting to us other things that could be done, so. And finally, we did a zero-waste picnic. Um, the attendance was pretty low on that, but that's okay. It provided a really good opportunity for our interns to learn how to set up event. And we're looking forward to doing many more events in the years ahead of getting out and finally, and meeting the public a lot more than what we do. And then finally, um, we've reorganized the city's Sustainability Office website, where if you go to that website now, you find all the information centralized about what all the different departments are doing across the city in terms of the sustainability programs. Um, we're also really excited about a couple of regional partnerships that um, we are working on. First with the Glendale Unit of Right at School District. Um, we have been a part of their sustainability project team. Um, so as GUSD looks to implement sustainability initiatives, um, we're there to offer them advice, um, and help and provide information as they go through that process. We're also working with um, GUSD's um, Facilities Department on potentially looking at establishing a green wall on one of their campuses. This fits in nicely with some other programs that GUSD has done to try and create more green spaces for their students. So again, I have to give credit to our interns for coming up with this idea. Um, we're at the very beginning stages, but GUSD is very excited um, to work with us on this program. Also, we are developing partnerships with um, Glendale Community College. With thanks for introductions from our Innovation Performance Program. Um, we're working with um, GCC students in terms of making sure that when we do public outreach over um, the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, that we hear from all quarters of Glendale, or all quarters of Glendale, all the different um, groups in Glendale, and so we've challenged them to um, come up with a process that the city can use to make sure that, as I say, every resident of Glendale can participate in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, and then also more long-term um, participate in our sustainability programs. So we're very excited about that partnership. And then finally, we have attended a number of regional programs regarding sustainability. And I think... Oh, nope, next slide. So for next year, our goals are to continue with our community outreach and engagement programs, continue to develop regional partnerships. We really want to also enhance our internal partnership and support initiatives by other departments within the organization, and from that, we hope to begin to derive sustainability plan. We're going to assist the Sustainability Commission as they develop their work plan for 2022, 2023, and they bring that work plan to City Council, for City Council to review. And finally, our big focus on the next 14 months to 18 months will be management of our climate action and adaptation process. Next slide, sorry, this doesn't seem to be working. I do apologize for going that fairly fast, but I was encouraged to do so. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for the great report. Was that Councilmember Najari?
Yes. David, what are we doing with battery disposal? What's the best way to get those? Do they go to the fire station?
That is correct. The best way to dispose of batteries is taking as household hazardous waste to the Environmental Management Center.
Oh, we got to go all the way down there?
Yep.
Can you give us an address for that? An address?
Is that along Flower Street?
It's on your Airway Drive.
Okay. Just during business hours, just drop it off?
Correct.
Okay. The other thing is, I think it'd be a good idea if you, and your general concept is reducing waste, we're doing the no plastics and all that, but maybe take it a step further and create disincentives for people to have full, in other words, reduce the size of the garbage or have twice a week, excuse me, bi-weekly pickups, either a financial incentive or a financial disincentive, depending which way we want to go. So people, I mean, we've seen how they complain about the current commercial franchise, so obviously, they're very price sensitive to waste, but I'm wondering if you can maybe have one of your interns or something, look at ways other cities have a little more forcefully tried to encourage the residents to reduce their waste.
Yeah, we'd be happy to take a look into that.
I mean, I have my garbage can, and I, you know, I buy stuff, and I don't think twice about just dumping it in there, but if I knew there was a financial disincentive, I would maybe be a little more careful with what I buy and how I compact it and so forth. So I'm just, just an idea that you spurred with this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Who would like to go next?
I have a question, maybe a comment, so.
Councilmember Brodmann?
The question is, we, I know we went through a budgeting process, and we are giving you a head, right, for a support person? Did we end up doing that, and where are we with that?
Yes, Mayor, one member of City Council, Councilmember Brodmann, we are in the process of recruiting for that position. I think fairly soon we'll be holding interviews.
Okay, well, that's great, because.
There was, it was great interest, actually. We had a large number of people applying.
Oh, good.
Yeah, over 200 applications, and we're interviewing 12 people this Thursday.
Excellent, okay. Yeah, I mean, my comment is, I want to thank you for all the work you're doing. I know you've got a lot on your plate, and we keep throwing more stuff at you, and I want to thank my colleagues for, you know, supporting, setting up the office's sustainability, which was before I was on council, and then since I've been on council, setting up the commission, and I know we've got lots and lots of things in the pipeline, like, like the, you know, EPP and the reach codes, and I won't go through the whole list because you just did, but we've got a lot in the pipeline. And so just, you know, and oh, the other thing is, when we had that, when we had our council offsite a couple of weeks ago, and we went through what our key priorities are, and we all voted, and the category that got the most votes was actually sustainability. It's not as if we're ordering our top four priorities, but maybe, you know, a lot of people in the public may not know that when we went through that voting process, actually that came out with the most votes, so there was real consensus here that that's, that's something that we need to work on. I'm, I tend to be kind of impatient, and I, you know, I look at all these things we're doing, and then I look at the magnitude of the problem that we're trying to solve, and it, and it can be overwhelming, so I just want you to know that when I kind of complain that we're not doing enough, it's not without recognizing what we are doing, it's just that, there's just so much that we need to do, and so that's where I'm coming from. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
And that is correct. We're looking forward to not being so reactive, be more proactive going forward, so to be able to address these issues more effectively.
Thank you. Councilmember Katsakian?
I appreciate all the work that the city is doing. I appreciate how we've turned over a new leaf in terms of our overall operations and approach and incorporating, you know, just more responsible stewardship of our environment in all our operations. Most importantly, what I appreciated, Mr. Jones, about your presentation was mentioning how you're working with the college and with the schools. As I've said time and again, if we can educate and inform and train and involve the next generation of Glendale's residents and leaders, we will be successful. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to staff.
You're welcome. Councilmember Aviganian?
No comment.
Okay, that leaves me. Mr. Jones, very impressive. I really like the innovation fun in education, and that's going to be very, very positive, that's a very positive approach, and I think it's a great way to reach young people. I'm curious about the, you identifying the students that are on the Sustainability Commission. Do you have their names and what schools they're from, or?
I do know the names. I don't know which schools they're from. Henry Gang.
Go ahead.
Henry Gang and Andrea Pedrosa are the two students.
Okay, are they high school students?
They are high school students.
Great, and they're interested in the environment? That's fantastic.
Actually, no, sorry, let me correct myself. Henry is a high school student senior who's going on to Berkeley College with Berkeley University, we believe, next year, and Andrea is a university student.
Great, good. This is, this is a great experience for them, I'm sure.
It is.
All of these programs that you're talking about, I guess the dry wells had a good day today, huh? Wow, okay, but anyway, you've been doing such, you and staff are, are working so hard because you are constantly being bombarded by requests and suggestions and, you know, do this and do that, and, and I know that you're, you're just about treading water, but this, this was a very impressive report. I know that we will expand these programs, the plastic, the use of plastics and the landscape equipment, and a lot of the other programs that we're talking about in the next, in the next year will be expanding, but for now, thank you for this great report. You, I, I've said this before, Mr. Jones, you hit the ground running when you took this position, and you have not stopped since, and that's really a compliment to you, and I thank you, and I think we all do. And let's just keep working together, all of us, and addressing, I mentioned the other day, we were aggressively addressing environmental climate changes, and we will continue to do that in our, in our city for our residents and for our future, for our future kids and their kids and their kids. So thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, then.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Next item?
Next item would be Oral Communications. Discussions is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to, respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The same manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Madam Mayor, I do have one caller on the line.
Okay, thank you. Tiar?
Herbert Milano, you have five minutes, Herbert, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Mayor Devine and members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. Last week, you received a comprehensive annual financial report. That's the audited official report for fiscal year-end, June 30th, 2021. This is a document that is often recognized with a brief presentation by staff and filed away. Rarely, if ever, is it brought back and discussed or evaluated. Yet, it is the most important document that reflects the state of the city and demonstrates how your priorities were implemented. The CAFER is the lagging indicator of decisions taken much earlier, you know, from one year to 20 years ago. In my experience, working in accounting as a controller for several organizations, and in my role as executive director and as a business owner, the monthly financial reports were critical and essential activities to take to pulse of the organization and assess if we were on track with the financial objectives that we set out to achieve. Yet, in Glendale, this document is not a living document that drives the assessment of key financial indicators. The CAFER has significant and valuable information that merits your attention. Though the document is large, it comes with a concise statistical section that summarizes information across a 10-year span and allows you to determine key trends. For example, we learned earlier today that the census report shows Glendale's population grew by two and a half percent in the last decade, two and a half percent. The CAFER tells us that the utility users' tax revenues decreased by 1% during that period of time annually. In the section of the general revenue and other changes in acquisition, here's what I see. Property tax revenues increased from 59 million to 72 million, that's a 22% increase. At astonishing rate, police costs increased by 49%. Population increased by two and a half percent, but policing costs by nearly 50% from 72 million to 170 million this year. So I ask myself, why is it that we can't seem to control policing costs? Given that we have 77,000 occupied households, that means that we're paying $1,400 per household annually for policing alone. So how does that compare to other cities deemed as safe as Glendale? Glendale spends $35 million more per year for policing than it did a decade earlier. Here's another very important item. What is the total long-term debt obligation the city has? How much is that as a debt per household? I don't have a clear answer to that, and I wish for the city to find out. Shouldn't you all know? Here's another important item that merits discussion. The CAFER does not tell what the deferred infrastructure needs are, but we can indirectly infer where some of the problems are derived based on other, other city documents. My estimate is that it is in the hundreds of millions of dollars for both governmental and the Glendale Water and Power. So when do we get to assess how much of the infrastructure is simply being ignored or deferred year after year? Should we not know what is the unrecorded financial obligation of infrastructure needs? Let me give you an example. The city should be reconstructing about 18 miles of street pavements every year to prevent further deterioration, yet in the last 10 years, less than one mile was reconstructed, not one mile per year, less than one mile for the whole decade, and that's according to the data on page 221 of the statistical section. In 2012, nearly 22,000 square feet of potholes were repaired. Last year, less than 10,000 square feet were repaired. And I have dozens of pictures of potholes, some as wide as two feet in diameter, in my neighborhood. So not only is the city not funding pavement reconstruction, it is not even fixing all the potholes that need the most minimal repair. The conditions of the streets, such as Lexington, California, Louise, Kenwood, all of them, east of Brent, are amazingly dilapidated, and when it comes to roads and sidewalks, we have blighted conditions, and I can present, I can present this in January with pictures to prove it to you. The CAFER tells us about the trends in the last 10 years and where the focus of the budgeting process should be. I urge the City Council to make the CAFER an essential document for discussion as the budgeting process is. It is an integral document to the creation of a responsive budget, and please, please, fix our roads. Thank you.
Any other calls?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one more.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to let Mr. Milano know that fixing our roads and streets are on, in our work plan, and thanks to President Biden's infrastructure bill, we will hopefully get funding for, for more infrastructure repairs. Next caller?
Malcolm Johnson, you have five minutes. Go ahead, Malcolm.
Hi, I just want, as a Glendalean, I'm very proud of the work the Glendale Arts Commission has done to make the utility boxes and the telephone, the repair boxes painted and colorful and beautiful. Of course, some of them have, have been damaged, some of them have been vandalized. I just wanted to see if the council can remind people how best to report this, these damages to these things, and go on from there. Thanks.
And Mr. Milano, do we, do the residents simply call Parks and Arts and Culture or 548-4844 to report damaged boxes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, either those two or my Glendale app.
Okay. 818-548-4844, or go to the Glendale app. Thank you, and what's next?
Next would be adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned at 9:27. Thank you all, and happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.